Well, I've got three projects here to bring everybody's attention to.
Hey, the first one is when we place flooring and repeat Environmental Services Department. He should be in here begging.
Yeah, and what that is, is I was notified when Matt took over that it'd be nice to, it's been awhile since anything's happened up there and the flooring is in disrepair and badly worn, there are stains and some odors, so. I talked to Jenny and I went out and got a, I did get a, prepare a couple of quotes for you to be able to entertain the idea of freshening the office up a little bit. And to direct your attention to the sheets there, I had Patty Belon come over and she gave us a price that you see there of $52.99. Hamel Flooring came in at $5,052. But the pricing there is a little bit tighter than what you think because as I reviewed the quotes for the flooring, if you look at the square footage total that each one took.
They don't add up?
They don't add up.
Yeah, I saw that.
And so, and so I backed it off from, I brought Patty in closer to Hamel Flooring and you're only talking about $82.65 a difference between the two. Other than the fact that Patty is asking for a little more help from the maintenance department here in moving furniture whereas Hamel Flooring would take care of that, so. And then the, when it comes to the painting, I did get two quotes there as well. Adam McIntyre at 1200 and Tony Holinko at $3,145.
Quite a difference there.
Yeah, quite a difference there.
Do you have any concerns about the lowest bidder?
Um, not really. As far as the flooring goes, Hamel Flooring has done the ones over at Forestland and seems like everybody was happy with that, so it's really up to the commissioners here that which direction you'd like to go in. One will involve a little lifting from Jeff and I to do with furniture and like that. We intended to do the file cabinets and things like that anyway. But the desks are another story there. We're looking at them and the way that Hamel Flooring did it before is they lifted them right in position and didn't take them out like that and then cut the commercial grade rubber plank flooring that I think we're intending to put in there in pieces to fit underneath there and then just let the thing down. So we weren't destroying their office because they still need to work from their offices all day and like that and a lot of this will take place sometimes during the evenings and even on the weekends, so.
The painting part, there's so big difference there. Is that, do you have any concern about that at all or?
Um, I don't know. Each of them were there and they each measured off the walls, square footage and I'm not sure how to, there would be any concerns or what. Again, though, that would be another, when they paint, they're gonna paint certain walls at certain times because their, the office is so full of equipment and things. And then until we can get things, help in shuffling things out, then they'll come in again and get some more walls and it'd be an ongoing process until it gets covered and everything.
I'm sure Eddie.
Um, I don't, I don't, according to his done painting for years, I, the other guy went to here and just went.
Adam.
Yeah, okay, has he done a fair amount of painting?
He did most of the airport.
Eddie?
Yeah, he's done it for a long time.
Okay.
He's done some things here as well, I believe.
Yes, he's done all the historical painting colors he does.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's done most of the painted year.
The chimney for the boiler out there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead. I'd ask, do we do this in two motions? Are there two separate projects, are there not?
Yes, there are, Chair.
So first of all, I would move to, to award to Adam McIntyre a little bit with painting.
Motion. Oh, second. And we've got a second, McBride and Eddie. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries.
The second part then is, it's both businesses that are very, very, very good businesses and you kind of like moving back and forth when they're so close, but the only advantage that I would give to Hamel would be, like you said, from moving to the furniture.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's time on back breaking on you and your partner.
And we intend to help out there regardless of who gets it. We'll move the file cabinets, the smaller's, but when it comes to the desks.
How many desks we got? One, two, three?
Four.
Four.
Yep.
Done business at all of them.
What is each one of the timeframe? Is it gonna be a couple of days or one evening after hours or how long it's gonna take? Do we know what did they say?
I guess they really didn't say. I expected that they probably worked weekends on some occasions.
Probably.
And both, both were open to that fact as well because of the fact that the business needs to continue there.
Nope. I don't have, I don't either, I don't.
No recommendation, Dean.
Boy, well, one way you could look at it is, and I, again, I've got nothing against either of them, but you've just awarded a lot to Dewey Hamel over at Forestland and like that if you wanted to throw somebody else something.
That's, I was kind of leaning that way.
That's reasonable.
The other, I would absolutely 100% go the other way because the last contract, we were very close and Hamel got that. I would go to Belon, but the other reason that would hold me back could be, you know, the added duties and maybe that you're gonna put in. So with that, I won't motion to Belon.
All right, we've got a motion on the table. For a second.
Thank you.
Motion by McBride, by Commissioner Norby, to discuss. Hearing none, all those in favor. Both motion carries. Anything else you've got?
Yeah, next one. To direct your attention to some heating, ventilating and air conditioning projects. This is right in the IT, the auditor's office around the corner. You hear the air handler going above us here.
Yep.
It's been brought to my attention that the girls working along that wall there, Jackie and Char and Quinn was in there. For many years this has been going on. When the air conditioning kicks off, it absolutely freezes them out because there's three large ductwork openings that dump into that office space there to the point to where they're plugging space heaters in in July just to take the edge off of them so that they can work and it goes through the summer. And so I.
That's a typical summer here though.
Yeah. So I looked at it and I got some extra thoughts on it and the way to do that would be to install a little ductwork, taking one of the openings and traveling just down right outside this door here, down just a little bit, cut through into that storage room that's on the other side where the IT have a lot of their equipment and all that, storage, office goods and things like that. And then turning and popping it out and facing it out more toward Bob and Shelley and everybody into that space there because they're sweating basically there and the others are freezing. And they've tried setting up fans over the years to move that air through there and to try to, and it doesn't seem to be working, so. A good sized ductwork there to help better efficiently distribute the air the way it should be and help alleviate that problem.
Is there any kind of return air in that area or is it, is there something taking air out of there or not?
I believe there's air coming back here somewhere.
Yep.
There's one right there. Yeah, and there's probably one in the other room there, I'm not sure. It's just a function of channeling the air a little better, so.
The board is, you know, over the years, they complained on me and the people who come here to the meetings, this is very difficult to hear because of that exchange.
Yeah.
Is there, is there any way to control that or be able to shut it out during a meeting or that type of thing? Or does it have to continue around?
Well, I'm sure you could shut it down during a meeting or whatever.
I mean, it's, it's the only time it becomes a problem. It's hard to hear there as well. We've had that complaint.
I think it's from the outside, is it? Outside?
There's fresh air right outside the wall here too.
Yeah.
Drowning in.
I don't think it's the cold air turn making noise. I think, I think it's actually the windows still being heated.
No, that thing, in the winter, that's when, that's when the.
The noise that you're hearing right now is the air handler down right now below us here that's feeding the fresh air.
And what Brian's talking about is that big HVAC.
Oh, that thing there.
Sometime when it kicks on, you can't hear it at all.
And it's hard for us to close the windows because then it gets so hot in here, so, you know. Anyway, it's a long-term issue, Dean. We've dealt with it for years, but I mean, if there's any way that could be controlled, at least when we're having the public meetings, it would help to be people in the audience, that's for sure.
Dean, this is generally a summer issue, it gets too cold for them and by the time the heat doesn't blow them out, overheat them or?
Um, that's a whole different deal.
That doesn't come through that?
That's hot water.
Also, hot water too then, there is no.
Yeah, this is just air conditioning.
Okay, yeah.
And.
Only the air.
And we have, we have that same heat, cold issue in here because many times during the winter on a 20 below day, we've got the windows open because it's so hot in here.
It's hot right now. I need a little diagram, I don't know what did you guys say?
Yep, we got it.
So anyway, now you heard all our.
And you're looking at like around three grand.
Should we need authorization to go for bid or just, you're gonna just go?
Um, it's up to the board.
Is it in your budget?
I got, yeah, there's, we could either use the capital out building improvement, 685, the current balance there is 5,500, or it could come right out of the repair maintenance of the complex building, there's 7,700.
You should probably have an authorization so he's clean. Think we could all end up on plane crash or?
Yeah.
I'll ask, right?
Motion.
Second.
Second. McBride, Eddie, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, what was that motion carries?
Just one going back to the previous with environmental services. Now, obviously, I mean, we could do maintenance and painting in that part of the building, right, but we cannot do anything to the building itself being that it is historic?
Nothing structural at all.
Right.
And those, those kind of tiles that you're talking about, those are removable if we ever have to do a renovation.
The commercial grade rubber planking.
Yeah.
I believe it hooks together, kind of.
You can unhook it?
Locks it together or whatever.
Things have changed so much.
Yeah. Jenny and I were talking, it'd be nice to maybe look at trying to, if the floor was salvageable, to bring it back to the original floors and whatever.
About to.
Well, I went up there and I threw it, we picked a little spot in the corner and lifted a little carpet, well, the carpet is glued across everything, so. That'd be a huge job to.
But it can be done and that's, that's the, that's whole idea of the circle. Ryan raised a good point because we can't do anything that would, I mean, you can sand a floor that's got glue on it.
Yeah.
But so, but the tiles, these rubber tiles we're putting down is not gonna change anything.
Right.
It can be removed and still.
It could be peeled up and out.
That'll flush probably either hardwood or it's probably like the old granite, I don't, what's they call that floor?
Tarazo.
Tarazo?
We're all trying to learn that.
It is a stone, right?
It's a poured floor.
That is poured?
Yeah, that's why it lasted so long. Look, you can't see anywhere on this, everywhere you go to the stairs, that's where everybody, you can't even tell. Amazing.
I thought it was stone. Yeah, I did too. I'm sorry, no every day, I digress.
All right, back to reality.
Yeah, last one. Here's a, this is really something, this one. Okay, over the heating season here, it's time to address a few things as far as the steam equal is within the complex here. And it deals with steam traps and everybody knows, you've heard about how steam traps work, I don't know how it traps the steam within the radiator, it flashes to condensate and back and it goes again. When these steam traps don't work, you lose all control with heating and that's what's going on over at the highway department right now. There's little or no control over there all winter and they have their windows open when it's 30 degrees below zero to alleviate this problem. And so, over the course of time, I've been trying a few things and I'm down now to where I'm right on top of the boiler with the main boiler valve and I've got it pinched right off so that it's just a trickle going over there. And then Donna will call me every once in a while and say, hey, you gotta give me a little more and then I'll go down there and crack it a little more and find that happy medium for the weather that's going on outside.
Whatever Donna wants, Donna.
Yeah. Anyway, I've located 31 total steam traps and they're of the inverted bucket style and the flow kiln statics and also the radiator style that pour out the radiators. And they need to be maintained over the, over time and most of these have never been touched. I found three of them that have been done over the years, but the others have not been touched. There are three that are obsolete, you can't get parts for anymore that would have to be completely changed. And, but the others could be rebuilt right in position. And I did some more digging around and I found out that there's rebates available for these things. And out of the 31 in the bunch, I think there's like 13 or 14 that could possibly fall into that category or low. They'll do 50% of whatever the rebuild cost is on it, they'll kick it in, so. And I did some numbering on that too and it looks, if they all qualify, the ones that I think they will, it'd be about a $600 rebate to keep back to the new complex. But you're wasting a lot of dollars right now that are blowing through that and big steam.
I think we'd be implying to go along without slipping elevator in while you're out of it.
Yeah.
Trust me.
I estimated cost on it, I worked through State Supply and they did all the pricing for me and then I'm at about 3,400 there, 2,878 if the rebating goes through, like I think it might, the funding could come, I've got my project's budget, number 6379, there's a balance in there of 13,0481 right now. And it would be a nice summer project, what I do, when everything goes down, I'll get on them and I'll start going through them and then I'll be able to know more about it because there could be someone that, some of them that are really, really worn that might need to be replaced, but I think they'll, I think I can rebuild a lot of them right in position.
So none of them are, they have a, or a hole through them or they're not leaking, they're not, they're just a.
But they do, they stick.
They float.
And the steam blows through and then you have no control, that causes overheating and then also the, when you hear the banging and the smashing of the heat pipes, that's water that's getting, working its way in through and then it collides with the steam and then that's what causes all this banging and crashing.
Sounds just like someone picks a hammer like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, we, this board and the county are very fortunate to have someone that's been a great expert with us.
I gotta throw one more.
Has been going through all these things, I mean, it's greatly appreciated.
There's a figure for you. I tracked the courthouse, this is just the courthouse only, gas usage right now because I do all the benchmarking for the place with the state and all that. And we're, we're approaching the 10,000 for fuel costs here for just this courthouse, okay? Doesn't involve any of the other little heating radiators that are out in the other buildings and.
Just since the first of the year or?
Yeah.
Or since the beginning of the heating season?
Since the beginning of the heating season. Since I got here in October, so.
That's one way. Go ahead. It just, I believe a motion is, it's a no-brainer and this one, I think the return is a matter of just short-term, we'll have all that money back and save it.
Yeah.
Who do allow the, the complex superintendent move forward with the steam trap replacement repair?
Commissioner McBride, second by Commissioner Eddie, you guys kind of got a thing going here today.
Yeah.
Discussion, questions? Forestland, how's that doing as far as?
It's humming right along.
Really? I won't ask anymore.
Yeah, let's not.
Oh, yeah, that's why I go on it. All right.
James or anything like.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah.
No, no, no. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Getting on the.
We'll get on.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries.
Do we find anything with the elevator? Why was it ringing and jerking a little bit?
They did do some oil into it, just, it was more of a conditioner or anything. And they lubricated, they re-lubricated the post, the main dry cylinder because the new, the new seal that we put in was actually making it too clean and so they, they're gonna watch that from now. And then we tightened up some of the banging and the jiggling in there was only the top where the lights are and things like that, some of those panels were a little loose, so we added a little tighteners or whatever you want to call it in there to take that jig.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll see you later.
Thanks, Dean.
Soil and water.
Hello again, you're gonna love me today.
Our favorite soil and water.
You're gonna love me today. So, thank you for having me back. For clarification, the resolution that I brought to you last week was, as Commissioner Briggs indicated.
Briggs.
Oh my God. Briggs, why did I, Briggs, McBride, I'm sorry. I saw you and I said Briggs.
It's the Brian part, yeah.
It's the Brian, I'm sorry. It was the, just the state template and it.
But I think it was Commissioner Pavlick.
The, that it was a template, yeah. And it, the, my error for not making sure that I had the parts that didn't, that weren't applicable, removed. And it's the standard for counties who choose to invoke their authority to regulate land use and development within municipalities, this plan doesn't. And so, it just wasn't applicable. So, good call for Matt and Nathan catching that, so it was no problem just removing all of those parts that didn't apply. We did run it by the county attorney and it has the blessing of that office and both the Environmental Services Director and the Land Commissioner.
So if we approve this, that six-month issue goes away?
It's, right. The language that we were looking at, even if we had approved the one last week, it just wasn't applicable because the plan itself doesn't regulate, so none of that would have taken place because it didn't apply, but it was good to take up.
And this had nothing to do with you, you do a great job, it's, you know, we know when you can't trust the government.
(laughing) Well, we're here from the government, we're here to help. No, not a problem at all and I appreciate the good eagle eyes. This was the first time I've actually had to bring this to you, usually it was your Environmental Services Director, but with the, with the quick turnover with Dale leaving and Matt coming on, I was filling in and I just did not, I should have just looked at it closer to make sure that the language is applicable. So I appreciate the review and we're all, it's short and sweet now.
Nathan, you're good to go?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And Matt's here.
Oh, there's Matt, okay.
Yeah, it just, in the resolution, it talks about how, you know, the related resource plans and the official controls and the county water, existing county water plans are consistent and compatible, they come on with this plan, so. And they went through that when they, they reviewed and updated those plans, so I mean, they went through all the water plans to make sure they were consistent.
Yep, so, Big Fork River Plan, the Little Fork Rapid, all hazardous mitigation plan, I think we actually list all of the plans that exist in the county that manage a resource of some sort. And part of the job of writing the plan itself was to go through all of those so that we weren't, so that we were cohesive, that the goals were aligned. And so, this is the county's plan now.
Jenny could probably identify, she's got a mani-gest, so that's.
(laughing).
Cobra.
And this resolution is very similar to the resolution that Dale brought to the board 10 years ago.
All right, wishes of the board then. Did you move, wait? Got a motion by Commissioner Scoly. Second by Commissioner Norby. Any further discussion?
Well, when I looked at it and talked to, excuse me, wait.
Yep, go ahead.
And Pam, the only question was, and like she said, there's, there's nothing in there that says that there's any action taken on this, it's just to say that there is a potential, which is to cover the base, correct?
Oh, are you talking about aggregate?
Yeah, on the aggregate one.
Yeah, so, when we talked, I guess, maybe I didn't do a good job of clarifying last week, the original statement was the extraction of mineral and organic materials poses a potential risk. The recommended change from the DNR was that we include aggregate in the statement. So, the extraction of mineral, aggregate and organic materials poses a potential risk. So it's acknowledging that basically any mining poses a potential risk, that's just reality. What do we state as an action is just one statement in the plan under, under this category. And it simply says, stay locally involved by reviewing mining leases with state and federal authorities to ensure water quality is a priority, that leaseholders are following agency regulations and that mining and restoration plans are followed throughout the life of the project. That's the only action that falls under that, so inserting the word aggregate, I think on, at least how Dale and I had felt about it, was that it's just an acknowledgement, it just expands the category that says, any land disturbance has a potential, but it doesn't mean it, it will. We're just, we encourage best management practices to minimize risk.
Commissioner Brad.
Commissioner Pavlick, sometimes I think you're a little paranoid from dealing with other government entities, but this one was a good call, a good catch and then of course, Matt, Nathan and Pam supporting that, so thank you for questioning that resolution. Sometimes we just rubber stamp some of that stuff here, but it was a good catch.
I love discussion, it's good to, it's good to have those debates because then it helps, it does help us do a better job and I will never bring you a canned resolution again, I can tell you that.
Our current target is auditors, so.
Oh, okay, absolutely good.
Okay, anything else? Chair will call a question? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, both motion carries, and Matt will say thank you.
You bet. I don't know, did anybody want a bone copy? I just brought a couple, I gave one last.
Maybe a bone, but I don't have an updated one, but I'm fine.
This is the updated.
Yeah, fine, but there's just a couple, wordsmith, so I'm good.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment. Anyone here for public comment today?
We are. Here we go.
Bonner, you're welcome.
So, Ted Saxon and I wanted to make the county aware. Hello, Commissioners?
Hi.
Of a great opportunity for the community. The Blandin Foundation has been very interested in broadband in rural Minnesota for a long time and they have a program called the Blandin Broadband Communities, BBC, not to be confused with the more famous one. And every two years, they pick four communities in rural Minnesota to work with them over the course of two years on improving access to and use of broadband internet access. And May 31st is the deadline for the next two-year cycle, which we just found out about a couple of years ago, a couple of weeks ago. Ted and I are both graduates of the Blandin Leadership Training Program.
I took that myself.
Yeah, it's great.
Twenty-five years. Oh, yeah. I was about three. Had a great time.
What a great program, I agree with you.
It really is. And the BBC program follows a similar pattern where you're not applying for a grant in the first phase, you're applying to become a member, a participant in this four-year, two-year program, during which they meet with you and they help the stakeholders in the community define what are the priority issues, work through priorities and pick specific issues to tackle. And then they have up to $25,000 available on a 50/50 mashing grant for feasibility study for priorities, what can, what is possible with pushing internet out to more people. And also, $75,000 available to actually do a project and that's a three-to-one mashing program, so they put 75, the community puts up 25 to do whatever it may be. It could be pushing more, more cables and stuff out to the rural community so people out there can get hooked up, it could be improving cell phone, internet access, it could be anything, whatever the community has as priorities. So we contacted them and they are sending up a consultant who's gonna meet this Thursday at 3:00 PM in the library basement with whoever we can get to show up and we've contacted several dozen people, probably three or four dozen at this point about that meeting. And then the focus of that meeting.
You're talking the day after tomorrow?
Yes. The focus of that meeting is for him to bring everyone that's fully up to speed on what this two-year program is about. Then the application deadline is the end of May, so we should have time, since it's not a grant application, we should have time to put together letters of support from the various government entities, supporting organizations, businesses, et cetera, just to show that we are a community that really needs this and is ready to make use of this program. And I think we can put together a really strong proposal for them.
Their big thing was the more diverse your stakeholders are that are coming, um, that are gonna be champions of this, the more, the better chance you have of getting to be one of those four cities. So we really, uh, reached out all over the place. We, we contacted the city, the, uh, city of Rainier, um, a lot of the low-income, the people who service the low-income, Utasca, um, Woodland, and places like that. That way we can, uh, have just a better chance of getting them. And the nice thing about it is we have our own idea of what we want it to be. We kind of, we're, we're gonna push like a downtown wide-by district here, but they want, they don't want one, one person or one project, you know, doing it, doing everything. So I, since that's, you know, the Blandon philosophy, having all the community work together. So, uh, you guys are all, uh, welcome to come. We appreciate it if you could, um, or even just one, you know, so we can say we have another stakeholder.
Is there any potential for the, you were mentioning the Roulai communities. Is there any potential in this particular project for them, or?
Yes.
There is.
So basically, whatever the steering committee, um, that is on the application decides what the community is, that's what it's going to be.
Well, I just mentioned that because, you know, it'd probably be of us to make sure that they're notified, uh, and can attend if they so desire. Or I'd certainly like, I, I can't, I'm out of town for three days, so I, I think, uh, I think, uh, at the conclusion here, we could probably make this a board activity. I think it is important, you know. Do you hope such a, the date, Thursday, what time?
It's Thursday, 3:00 PM in the library basement. And we'll be sending out an email today, uh, with a little more details and more background on the program.
Yeah, and so even if you can't make it to the meeting, uh, some of the other stakeholders that they can't make it this Thursday, it doesn't mean you can't be part of the project because this part's just informational. It's not, you know, it doesn't define...
That's where things start, though. That's why I like to get, you know, anyone with an interest involved.
Right.
And then you get into something.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I appreciate your efforts and the, the things that came out of that Blandon Leadership Program. It's really wonderful. I mean, across the region, I've seen many things happen.
There've been 36 other communities that have participated in this. Some have been counties, some have been cities, some have been non-political geographical extents.
Yep.
Um, and so there's a, you know, proven track record to work off of, and we can learn from the other communities as well, and it's a, just a really good opportunity. Fixing that with other stuff that's been going on.
Commissioner Scoly.
Yeah, yeah, and you're gonna ask my next question because, you know, I've got the Birchdale, Loma area that was, you know, we haven't, that's why I was gonna see if this was a all-county inclusive or...
It can be. We wanna see improve, you know, throughout the county and beyond. Whether or not that makes sense for this specific application, I don't know. Although we can talk about that with the consultant they're sending up and among the stakeholders.
Do you, you have a brochure on it or a paper, any?
Well, we'll send out an email and I'll include all you guys' emails, uh, by the end of the day.
Okay, if you could give, get one to Jenny and then she could forward it to the other communities, so that would work.
Absolutely. Happy to.
Yeah. Commissioner Hady?
I'd just like to say thanks very much for bringing this to our attention and, uh, this opportunity for the, for the community, for the, for the county, so.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about it.
We've, we've kind of broadband for I don't know how many years now, so, but it's just struggle, you know, so.
So you still like them, then?
(laughing).
Yeah.
We, we all look after that. Thank you for bringing it up today.
Thanks, yes.
Thank you guys for your time.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I do have a meet with, uh, the people of Birchdale this afternoon, so.
Wonderful, yeah, spread the word.
Okay. Should we make that a board activity then? I'll make that a motion for a motion.
You know, I'm taking over.
Commissioner Hady, your second. Go ahead, no? And we've got a second by Commissioner Scoly. Discussion, hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Great. All right, anyone else for public comment? Hearing none?
Motion adjourned.
Thank you. Commissioner, second. And we've got a second from the Commissioner Ray DeCros, from you. What's his name?
I always forget.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. And we'll go to committee of the whole. Welcome, everybody.
I have meetings in the next three weeks, too.
Yeah. Welcome, everyone. We're gonna go into committee of the whole. First item here is the, uh, 2016 Koochiching County Audit Exit Presentation, and we have our expert here to present, so, and welcome.
Okay. I brought all the work papers so I could do some work with Jenny. And your beautiful audit reports are safe on my desk at the...
If you all...
I don't have here.
Have you all met her?
I forgot. I'm sorry. It's never happened before. But it's kind of old news, anyway. You know, it's 2016, so we're doing some work on 2017 and 2018, so we're gonna make a few fixes.
Skip all that stuff. Is ice gonna go on in Lake of the Woods, or what's going on there?
The river's open all the way to Clemson.
It is.
But that's frozen solid, though. And we're still fishing, we still have five feet of ice.
Isn't that some?
We just pulled the house off Saturday night.
Unbelievable. We were just talking about...
We're having the best fishing we've ever had in the shallow water in the evening. We got like a 32-inch and a 36-inch walleye back-to-back.
Whoa.
Like in 10 minutes.
Oh.
So can we get any big enough to keep?
That's fun.
So it's been fun.
We're having a ti, hard time getting keepers, huh?
Yeah. No complaints.
Yeah.
So, aside from that, um, you know, the audit report, we're, no problem. I mean, the fund balance, we talk about that every year. I don't really have any, any comments, I mean, because the information you get from the audit or from the administrator's office is current. It's good information. We don't make a lot of adjustments in journal entries, so you can make your day-to-day decisions based on what she gives you. So at least you know that. We talk about that every year. And as you know, you have a responsibility to sniff out fraud, waste, and abuse and report it directly to me if you have any indication of anything going on. And I haven't had any, found anything on my own, so I think everything is great.
Well, waste and abuse, we can, we can give that information to you about...
I have some information.
How about about the state audit?
About what's...
Starbait.
Okay, so the update on that situation is the Supreme Court ruling was supposed to be guaranteed within 90 days, which would have been the end of March. So we've been checking every, every day on the website and nothing yet. So what that is, is the, the, she wants the Supreme Court to overturn the two lower court decisions, giving the counties the right to privatize. Okay, so we're holding off on starting the 17 audits because should the Supreme Court overturn those two lower courts, then she's, remains in charge of all counties and we're basically done. So then I'll retire and I will come here and work for free and help you guys. Just, just, so then...
I want, I speak for a lot of people when I say how disappointed we are in what's been happening here.
It's, it's gonna cost, it's already cost for her sending out the eight crews to redo the eight counties for 2015. We're already into a million dollars. And that is taxpayers' money spent, no matter which pocket it comes out of. It's absolutely ridiculous. It's a shame.
It's unbelievable.
It's a shame. It's, it is unbelievable. So then, another, another development. She turned me into the federal departments because she said my audits were insufficient. So they came to my office, but the inspector general from the Department of Transportation from Baltimore, Maryland, came to my office two weeks ago and spent a week. And he, the project he had chosen to review was a $1.4 million highway project, not this county, another one. And he said he's never done one so small. He's usually doing audits in the billions of federal money. So he, this was just an eye-opener to him on how small-town America works. We spent a lot of time not even talking about what he was really there for. Just me giving him a heads-up, here's how the money filters through the state out to these counties. They don't have the same infrastructure out in, out east in the DC area as far as the channels that this money flows through. So he was impressed. I mean, he got an airfold. And he said, when his supervisor was told about us and that they should come out and look at us, they were just salivating because they thought they were just gonna get something really big, you know? And here, he said, "We were sent on a wild goose chase." And he said, "This is waste and abuse, the fact that we're here." He said, "This is gonna cost between three and five grand for me to be here this week." And he said, "This is waste and abuse. I got no business here." This stuff is fine. He did fine stuff in our work papers. What he found was the management representation letter that we always sign at the end of the audit and the audit report date have to be the same. So when I sent it to the county, I dated it for the 28th, knowing that was gonna be the date of our report. Well, they signed it on the 26th, 'cause I sent it a little early, so I get back. So they changed the date to the 26th. So when I got the letter back, I didn't notice that they changed the date. So two days off on the letter, so I gotta find it. So he's going back to Baltimore, Maryland to determine what he's gonna do about that. But, you know, when he left our office, this was a very grave and serious situation. So, you know, that I can take. You know, the content of what he looked through, it, you know, it was a good, it was a good thing for me, too, because we learned, you know, we said, "How do you do it? How would you like it? What do you think about this?" He looked at our stuff, we, he, he learned some things, we learned some things. So that was a valuable experience, so there was some gain out of it. But it took a week away from my time, and as you know, I'm having, I'm behind as it is getting my audits done. And so I have this whole round of audits to do. We're working on 2017 cities right now. I have two new staff that I'm training to try to get up to speed, so it's good. I mean, we're, no one said, "Stop doing audits." Even the state auditor, they're not saying cease and desist, or nobody's saying that. The State Board of Accountancy, Chris Lamart and I, the three partners, went to St. Paul. We went to the Golden Rule Building, where all the federal regulatory offices are. Locked in there, all dressed up, you know? Sat in the little waiting room, just like nervous chickens, and, and there's a glass door in front of us, and we're waiting to be called in one at a time to be interviewed by the board, by the committee. And this janitor guy comes walking down the atrium of the other room, and he looks in the window at us, three little girls sitting there. Well, not little girls, but you know what I mean. We're all sitting there like this, you know? And he looks at us through that window and he points right at me and he looks like this and he goes... That's what he did. And we're like, "Oh, my God." Oh, so we were there, but he got people like this. Weird. So we were in there four hours. They drilled us. They couldn't believe, you know, they, they just couldn't understand what this problem really was. We had sent them all of the information, that was the complete information. That was not what the state auditor looked at. And they're like, "What's, what's the problem?" And we're like, "Well, you, you looked at the complete information. She didn't. She made her judgment on incomplete information." And they're like, "Why did that happen?" And I said, "Because when we sent it to her, we, we didn't realize it was incomplete. When she said it was incomplete, we said, 'Yeah, we agree. We'll fix it.'" And she said, "No, it's too late." This is the bottom line.
That's what started all.
That's what started it all.
I remember.
And, and it wasn't just my firm at that time, it was all six firms. So all, none, only one of the firms out of the six has settled this. And they had reissued a report, and, they only did one county. And they had reissued their report and they're, they made it go away. But there's a couple still of the big firms that are still fighting with her about this because they're saying no. And so, so now what I'm finding out, which I'm not allowed to know anything about what's going on with the audits of my eight counties, but I'm pretty sure that the journal entries she's making compared to what my financial statements or, you know, ours, our financial statements that we've already published, yours, the, what she's coming up with is immaterially different. Not, it's not material. So all of this work back in 2015 is coming up with nonsense anyway, so the whole point is what's the point? And when I called the AICPA and I said, "She finds material, she finds anything, should I reissue my reports for 15?" And they said, "Absolutely not." Because it's a matter of, was it accounts receivable last year or this year? And it would wash out in 16, and by 17, it's long gone. So there's no point. There's no point in it. So the whole thing is there's no point in any of it, other than her trying, you know, trying to make me look bad, which this guy that was in my office, he said, "I would sue her 10 times by now." And I'm like, "Well, I'm just little. I can't sue a constitutional officer," you know? So that, that's still on my table, but, you know, for now, nothing's been resolved. We don't have the Supreme Court, we don't have the State Board of Accountancy answers yet, and that's been going on since August. And we don't have the, the report back from the federal guy yet. So in the meantime, we're just plugging along, doing our audits. You know, we're taking all the criticism and comments and, and deciding if it's worth fixing or worth ignoring, and that's where we're going from there, so...
Like I tell you, you're well fatted by all the, all the other units of government that leave you with that you, you audited.
I appreciate that, but it's just this travesty that everybody's going through. You know, what your staff has gone through with this re-audit of way back to 14, you know?
Well, it's, it's cost, she might've cost us money, too, in all the other counties that she did this to.
Yeah. Not, not counting what she's spending, it's what you've spent and what I've spent during this whole process.
Yep. And I always told these board members, "One person I've never crossed, it's her."
Well, but you know...
Which might take a caution of your behavior, so.
Commissioner, go ahead. You know, the one thing that just jumped out when the state auditor's group was here, that, that her lieutenants were well grilled, they were well instructed in what to look for, and, you know, it's not just only the cost of, of doing our audits and the state coming down redoing them, it's all the time and cost that our department heads and, and staff have had to put in. I mean, that's gonna be, that's gonna be close to what we're gonna be charged from the state. So, you know, if they say it's extra amount of dollars, we might as well double it. So, and that's what's gonna affect on this county in times of hate, so.
Well, and we do have a core of eight county engineers, or county, excuse me, attorneys, eight county attorneys that do have some, as a group, would have a voice. And, you know, so we're just gonna, I mean, every, I'm just like waiting, just waiting for some of these decision-making authorities to come down and say, "Here's what we think." And nobody is willing to go out there and say that yet. Everybody's waiting for somebody else. And now, now the legislature's gonna be out in May, and not one county of U8 has gotten a bill yet or a report. And she's been working on it for six months. And you haven't seen even a partial billing or a report or anything. And I'm, I'm pretty much betting that you won't see anything until the legislature's out of session in May. So we may have to kick something into gear before that. But hopefully we'll have the Supreme Court decision soon. And so that's the status of that. So I apologize for all of this. I don't know how I could've done anything different.
It's not your fault.
Well, hey, it's, yeah, it, it is. It's my mistake, my mistake. I mean, way back in 2003. But this was when Tim Polente got elected governor. That's when we changed to a private firm. So I took my state crew and went to a private firm. Since 2003, we've been auditing these counties privately. counties privately. That's when it started under Polente. So, just hang in there. But the other thing is, in those 13 years, and I didn't do Crouch the whole time of that 13 years. I got in there a little bit later with you. But you did save quite a bit of money on your audits as opposed to having a state auditor. So, when you talk about the extra costs now, you know, you did save a lot of money in the past.
We still saved money.
Probably still. Yeah. But what a shame, you know?
We've always, you know, I know Teresa was always very satisfied with what we're doing for us, and so was everyone else.
Even, you know...
We're on your side in this, believe me, as are the other counties.
We talk about, like, my peer review team from the ASCPA that was just in my office in December, right during this, and we had passed with no comments, you know? And we're saying, "This is the audit the counties need. All according to government auditing standards. That's an audit." And the state auditor's saying, "No, they need all of this extra stuff too, because they're Minnesota counties and they're special." And we're saying, "No, you know, they don't need all of this extra stuff. They need an audit." So, it's, you know, I am not out looking at your meal receipts to make sure you're not charging alcohol. You have people for that. You know, I am not going into all your little departments and counting their petty cash. You have people for that. We've, you know, we've got controls in place. We've built in things so you do it yourself now. And that's not the approach they use. They go in and actually do that stuff and take time to do that stuff, which I know because I used to do it 20 years ago. But not anymore. Not when you have to be, you know, for profit, or at least to break even.
Well, if we get in trouble, our backup plan is to blame Trent. He's a dead man.
So, that's it. And I apologize for not having the reports, but you've got the PDF versions, the letterman versions. I'll ship them up here and have them for them. They're just in a blue pile like this, right on the corner of my desk. Because I brought all the work papers. Just, not that one. Then I woke up at 4 o'clock this morning and thought, "I should go get those. I have some water." But no.
Well, you had a pretty drive, didn't you?
Jim was conscious. I love it.
What's up?
Okay, so I won't keep you unless you have any questions.
We only got the week though.
Yeah.
Did you find any bullet points in the audit that you need to share?
Not for 2016 already. You know, well, it's not, I mean, it's fine. It's just not timely and it's not relevant. But we'll be talking.
All right. Well, thank you for coming up.
All right.
Keep us posted on the updates.
I will.
Have a good trip back.
Okay. We'll move on to highway business. Joe, Joe and crew. You've got all kinds of body here today.
All right, folks.
Why, look at this.
Oh, look at this.
Yeah.
All kinds of exhibits.
These are trying to impress us.
This is just a Van Lenn road.
Yeah. Get Jim on. Do you have one, Jim?
Yep.
Thanks. See you all back.
I'm sure we're in order here. They are in order. Let's go see if they stay in order. You know, if we don't understand things, it breaks pictures. There's stuff in there you might want to say about. Okay. It's not too late. Oh, you're right. All right. So, we know we have lots of items. We can go whatever pace the board wants to. Whatever you think is best, Joe.
I'll start at the top.
You ready to go? Okay, good. So, there's an agenda on top. Everybody's here just partly because everybody's been doing so much work on a lot of these items. I really wanted the board to get a chance to know and talk with these guys so that I can acknowledge that it is all of us working on all of these items. We have a great office going. We have good help from everybody. It's really, it's really a good team. We're in really good shape right now. Everybody's contributed to all of these items in this package today. The first one I'm going to talk about is an update on the Van Lenn Road extension. There's a fold-out map here. I tried to sort of go 11 by 17, but it was hard to see at that size. So, we thought we'd just provide a fold-out to help the conversation. There's lots of colors on here and lots of different alignments. We wanted to kind of walk you through some of the alignments that we've been studying and talk about where we run into some challenges and where we've had some success talking with property owners. We could start maybe with the yellow at the eastern edge here. Again, at the bottom of the sheet in the middle, we show the east end of the Van Lenn Road, which is Highway 14. It's kind of where the blue takes off. And then, there's a UT 213 that goes north from there. But the yellow option, we looked at as one of our earliest options we studied. We thought that it had a lot of high ground that we could run on, and that's why we were sort of drawn to that yellow option. It, we thought would minimize some of the wetland impacts, run on some high ground. And in the early versions of this alignment, the proposed yellow line intersected with Chunk Highway 11 at the same place where 103 intersects with Highway 11, South Jackfish there. Since then, and as we've been dealing with some of the property owners, the Orin families in this box in the year, the road has slid east in deference to some of the Orin property in that area. So, it would, as shown here, does not intersect with Chunk Highway 11 across from 103. But you see kind of two general colors in the background here. What is shaded in sort of the light green is the NWI wetland information. And not definitive, but just generally, that would indicate where the wetlands are. What's showing in sort of the brown color would be generally the uplands, what is not wetland by sort of the general mapping. So, we ran into some right-of-way challenges with the yellow option, especially as we get closer to Chunk Highway 11. That property is harder and harder to secure. So, we would categorize it as, we don't have willing sellers in that area, and probably the only way we could move forward was with them. So, we moved off of that one. Moving to the west, we looked at the Jesperson option. We tried to come up kind of the Minnesota power corridor almost, a little bit to the east there. We tried to jump on the parts of 109, tried to then turn, I'm sorry, turn to the north and get up to join with Chunk Highway 11 by going across the Jesperson property. Similar issues. That one is even more complicated with the water, Jackfish tributary there. There's a lot of issues there. There's also similar feelings from the Jesperson family as to the Orin family. So, not willing sellers, so we moved west a click. We looked at some options coming up, 109, that pushed forward adjacent to the Blaze property, where we would intersect with Chunk Highway 11 where North Jackfish tees off with the sign 94 there. Had conversations with Mr. Blaze, not a willing seller. We have certainly more details on any of these if you want to. But we found that that is not a corridor where we could get cooperation from the property owners. The next one that's shown here is really running on the 109 alignment. We've had several conversations with several property owners and folks that live on 109 and received a lot of pushback on that, that we would classify as a group of non-willing sellers. So, we kept moving to the west. And I would jump to the blue one maybe here. The blue one is what is sort of elevated to us as a corridor where we've had good luck talking to the property owners. Starting down at the south end, where the blue comes off of the east end of the Van Lenn Road, you know, there's a 90-degree intersection where the Van Lenn turns and goes north on UT 213. The blue shows a 40 mile an hour sweeping curve across property owner Aaron Riddell. I think Hagan is in there maybe also. We've talked to them. They are willing sellers and supporters of the project. We've talked to the Jones family, and they are willing sellers and willing to give us a corridor through their property. It's a husband and wife on the west forty and their son on the east forty. And we've talked about being able to run right on the common forty line between those two parcels. And then, we get into some city property. And then, any of these unnamed forties are public property, state or county. And as we move to the north, we get back into some of these named forties. We get to Lad Kaczynski's gravel pit area. We've talked to Lad. Lad's a willing seller. Joe Prettyman then has property to the north of Lad. Joe is a willing seller. Moving north of Joe, we get into Mike Hamm's property. Mike's a willing seller. And the last two are the Urina Lake One Stop on the west side and Nancy McCord on the east side. We're basically jumping on County Road 93 adjacent to Urina Lake One Stop and intersecting with Chunk Highway 11 right where 93 intersects with the town. So, the good news with this corridor is, of all the property owners we've talked with along this entire alignment, everybody has indicated a willingness to provide us with an easement. Lastly, the orange alternative, which we named sort of the Bowman alternative. We haven't really spent much time on that because we think it's too close to the Highway 11 bridge over the CN tracks. We think that the proximity of it would make it not a useful alignment alternative. So, we haven't pursued talking to property owners on that corner. We don't think that gives us the solution that we want. So, we really wanted to update you on the property owners that we've talked with, see what you think about this corridor, and see if you think a public meeting is the next step, or how would you like to move forward? All right. Well, I'll go first. Obviously, I heard from everybody on all of these, of course. Joe's done a good job, and his crew are wanting to get out here. Very difficult to get right-of-ways doesn't mean we can't do it. My one concern as I look at this, you know, and my support for these projects has always been, if we have a derailment right here at Rainier, and you've got a prevailing west wind, the further away this exit is, the safer people are going to be up the lake, you know, those constituents. If we go with the Rainy Lake alignment, it's not as bad as Bowman. I mean, when I look personally, I would consider it as Bowman. It does bring us closer, but I can see here also, not only are we able to get to the property owners, but it looks like it's a short spiral on these sides. All the wetlands just go with it. So, there probably is no perfect solution. You've got to look at the people down there in the Van Lenn Road, because here again, if there's a situation, hazardous chemicals, they're trapped. And they need to escape. I mean, that's just been too long, having them locked there. And it's only going to get worse. I mean, all the information we're getting is that rail traffic's going to increase. And that means more chance of, we just had a derailment, of all things. And I mean, that really brought it home when we had the bridge collapse in Erickspurk here two years ago. I mean, that could have been hazardous chemical car that went into the drink there. Luckily, it wasn't. Those grains, I recall, went out there. But it just really highlights how vulnerable people, you know, Kevin's history. We don't really care about Kevin, but those other people are nice. And we've got to provide their safety. So, Joe, I always like to say, I think you've done a great job. And, you know, it looks like we do have probably at this point, a preferred route. And I think the next step would be the public meeting because, you know, the rest of the people up there have to know what's going on. A lot of people in the neighborhood probably don't even know for sure that we're looking for them. Anyway, that's just my thoughts. Commissioner McBride?
You know, Joe, thank you guys for doing all this work. Preferably, when you look at it, you know, probably the best route, the funnest, the most unique and everything would be the yellow route. But when you go to the blue route that you've got here and you've talked to landowners and pretty much willing sellers, if we were to abandon that and go condemnation and many other ones, I think we'd be setting ourselves up. If we have willing sellers, pretty much a good route. It may be a little more wetlands, but I think if you start to take balance back and forth, you know, you're going to end up in serious fights if we try to go the other way. And I think the blue serves our purpose. That's where I'd support it. If this road was to be built.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Ron.
So, on the blue road, eminent domain wouldn't have to be used at all here.
We've got verbal, sort of verbal consent from everybody that we've talked to. We've asked, "Could you see working out an agreement with the county where we secure an easement without requiring condemnation or eminent domain?" And everybody on the blue road has said, "Yes, we could come to terms."
Are you in the city?
Well, sorry. Can't speak for private property owners.
That's terrific.
Joe, one good question.
Go ahead.
From the south end, you have to go to the blue rather than go down the county Route 113 because of the need to 40 mile an hour corner?
It's part of the state aid guidance. We talked to the state aid engineer about, "Could we put a stop sign there and make it a ninety degree turn? Could we do a roundabout? Could we do things like that?" I don't think he likes any of those options. I think he thinks we should be introducing a 40 mile an hour horizontal curve, which we've shown in the blue. The one, I wouldn't call it an advantage per se, but it gets us east of Newtown. We don't need anything from Newtown. The Puren family seems very supportive of the project on several of these corridors. But if we really wanted to try to push and have a 90 degree turn and a stop sign there, we could pursue that with state aid. We've gone through some conversations with them, and the first answer is, "We'd rather you didn't do that." So, we've tried to find a way where we have a horizontal curve instead of a 90-degree turn and a stop sign.
This is a much better design, which 90 degree.
Yeah.
It doesn't eat the traffic. Especially, people are trying to get out of there again. Should heaven forbid, what are your thoughts, Commissioner? You're offended by this?
First of all, you know, thanks for all your time on this. I know it hasn't been easy. I have, all people know it hasn't been easy. But I agree with Wade, first of all, on the orange line, that it's too close to the railroad. You know, you can see right by looking at the map, it's, you know, running parallel with the railroad. And it's, you know, if you had a derailment with a chemical spill of any kind, you know, you'd send the people right into it. And we have had chemical spills out there, you know, along, actually, I think it was on the MDNW more than anything that we had prevailing winds and stuff. And they actually did evacuate a couple times back in the, I think it was the early 80s or something. But anyhow, you know, moving east, you know, I know it's been a struggle finding people to support, people in that area, in that whole east area, to support anything. You know, the blue line, you know, we've got people that'll support it. It's, you know, it's a pretty decent route. It looks, you know, here I thought Kootenay County had no wetlands, you know? You know, you look at this map and, you know, probably at least half of it is wetlands, you know, so.
It's interesting how people are actually willing to split their property.
You know, it was interesting because we met with the Jones family, and the first version of this drawing, we were further west here. We were basically at the east edge of the Newtown property. And then, we were going through the middle of Gerald Jones' property. And Gerald actually, and Chase was at the meeting. It was, the whole family was there. They suggested we move it east, put it on the common forty line, sort of so each, the parents and the kid would each sort of split the right-of-way that was needed for the road right-of-way. So, they moved us east to that common forty line as part of that conversation.
And there is some benefit for them, but it's unusual for it to happen.
Right, right. And you know, one thing, just to go back to kind of why are we looking at a road extension? The next item on the agenda is the bridge, the Van Lenn Bridge over the CN tracks. And just a reminder of some of the challenges out here, the distance from the Highway 20 grade crossing downtown Rainier to the Highway 11 bridge over the CN tracks is about three quarters of a mile. And the typical terrains are 10,000 to 12,000 feet. So, roughly, the trains are two miles long. The distance from the grade crossing to the bridge is three quarters of a mile. So, the scenario that we've talked a lot about with Customs and those folks is that if there is a terrain position that blocks the Highway 20 grade crossing downtown Rainier, and it has some sort of a spill that causes closure of the Highway 11 bridge over the tracks, then both of those options, the grade crossing option and the bridge, prevent emergency responders and so on from getting east of the tracks, and it prevents everybody east of the tracks from getting to a location west of the tracks. So, it's in that sort of scenario where having a bridge at the Van Lenn Road does not address that scenario in the downtown Rainier area. So, it's just something that, you know, for some folks, we haven't thought about the geometry of the downtown Rainier area. So, I suppose this would end our practice of calling a CN and telling them, "I'm going to put a train there until we can pull if we didn't want eighty feet."
Yeah.
I think it's the best of the scenarios we could hold for. To me, the sooner we have the public meeting and if we're going to move forward of this route, the better because I think, I really think we've got a case here for some federal dollars. Because this is all due to the train and the exposure to chemicals and everything else. They go there. It's a very unique situation, and timing may be right. You know, it's not going to hurt to see what we can get. See, in the past, when we had Congressman Overstar, we'd have planned this. It's much more difficult now, but Congressman Nolan, retiring, is in the transportation media. He's got his government support.
Just quickly go on the blue route. Have you given an estimate of dollars? We're away from that yet.
I know. I wish I did have a number. I don't have a good number. When we were projecting information off the 332 drought from 53 to 1171, let's say, it was three miles and it was $6 million. So, it was two million a mile to reconstruct that kind of road. This project, the new construction, let's say this corridor is three miles long. If you use two million a mile, you know, is it a $6 million job? I don't have a better number than that. I wish we did. Same thing with the bridge, when we get to that. We've looked at so many options. I don't think we have good cost estimates yet. We kind of wanted to see what you thought about the corridor, and are we on the right track? And then, we'll certainly reply in the conference.
Well, I do, Commissioner. It's probably time for public meeting. But I really would like to hear from the people in the 24 area, you know, what reference on the roadway or the bridge. Because I don't think we're going to be able to do both in the next five years, you know? So, we need to pick one project and go with it.
Yeah. Which one's most feasible and then to get it accomplished?
The, you know, the importance of this, you know, as Commissioner Pavick said, you know, the train, the number of trains coming through there are increasing. You know, we've have had a few delays out there in the last couple months. Not long ones, probably, you know, probably 15, 20 minutes. It was longer than the 10 minutes. I know that because I was at one of them. But it was, you know, got stopped by the train, and it had stopped. You know, it wasn't moving. And I timed it, and I was there at the beginning of it. And of course, I was there till it went through. But, you know, the delays are there. And even just having a train, you know, even if it keeps moving, most of them are, you know, 10 minutes or longer just to get it through there. Because as, you know, as somebody mentioned, you know, they're 10,000 feet plus, you know? You know, so those aren't going to go through there quickly.
Right. There's a lot of prediction out there that trains will increase in length and in frequency. So, if we have 22 trains a day, stock like within the next five years, it could be 30 trains a day. And it could be longer than one or more frequently.
Yeah. And there are two sightings that they're working on now. You know, one on the north side, one on the south side of Van Lenn. So...
Last Thursday, when I was going to Virginia, there was one just pulling over at Ashlake. She's pulling over. There's one northbound right by Dean. I got to the floor. There's another one northbound. That's three trains right in that area with a meter of 10 minutes.
I've seen them. They're all, they're all oil cars, chemicals, whatever's in them.
Yeah.
And they've got, they've got a double engine in front and another set on the back that is loaded because of the leak. I'll tell you, one of the things I have learned at the Erickspurk, the derailment, I had no idea how long it takes to stop a fully loaded train, you know, a mile and a half long. And that engineer, and he saw the bridge was on fire, he couldn't get it stopped. It took a long, I can't remember, I think it took three quarters of a mile or something to fully stop that train because you've got so much momentum. You've got something that's heavy. The only thing that stopped him was when it drove through the bridge. That was another thing too, you know, not to wander off, but I mean, the fact that an operation like CN still has crease over bridges. I found that, you know, that some of their infrastructures become very old. There's no better example than Rainier. So, you know, where they're going to future, they're very, they don't float out a lot of information on what they're doing.
Kevin, do you think you'll have numbers that are actually opposed to this that don't want this extension? I know it seems hard to believe, but I... I know it seems hard to believe, but I.
It's possible. There may be a few. You know, a few years ago, when we, when we were talking about it, there was a couple of them that were opposed. But, you know, a couple, you know, there's 52 homes on the east side of the railroad crossing. So.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna end up probably just morphing right into the bridge discussion. But if we have a public meeting, would we tackle one at a time or would, would we have low package?
Reference. Good point. We'd probably think about that. You know, if it looks like every, everyone's on board, but you know, I am aware of some of them. We are gonna have opposition on this one also. So, so we might, we might wanna give them, you know, a solo treatment there before we, so we can hear, you know, hear all the concerns, et cetera, and not, would we be muddying the waters if we're going on to the next, at least for the first meeting, I think.
Agreed.
We'll, we'll follow up with an RBA to talk with the board, set a, set a public meeting and time and place and all that.
Perfect.
Okay?
Hey, pictures help to make it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. The next couple of items in the packet relate to the Highway 24 bridge over the CN tracks. The drawings are similar. I'm not sure if there's, we can both look at, both of you clear to. What's the same about the drawings is the placement of the bridge outlined in an orange rectangle. There's blue lines that represent the existing right of way. And there's red lines represent proposed right of way. There, yeah, that's it. There's an option A and option B for the Van Lynn Road bridge. There's two of them. Option B shows no retaining walls, just basically grading out the embankment. And there's more right of way impacts with that option. The option A is the lesser of the right of way impacts. So, just, just wanted to show you what we went up to relative to development of the bridge designs for Van Lynn over the CN tracks. Everybody, everybody good?
You're on option A right now?
Option A, sure. They're very similar. We could talk, we could talk it all through. Oh, sorry. Wayne, that one, sorry. There's a, second half of the East also has an option A. Ron has, I think Ron has one. Would you prefer that?
Oh, I think some of them.
So, again, we have just a couple of colors to call your attention to. Blue is existing right of way for Highway 24. Red is proposed right of way. Green is proposed retaining wall. Orange is proposed bridge outline. The black dash line is kind of the construction and it's how we would grade things out. What you'll see here is, based on having the aerial photo in the background, you'll see that the proposed bridge and the proposed alignment of 24 is shifted north of the existing road. That's in part so we could keep the Highway 24 grade crossing open to traffic while the bridge is being built. Also, some, it lends itself to some of the right of way impacts also. Based on, in some cases, the proximity of the houses to the proposed corridor. The reason we've shown proposed retaining walls in the green here, this allows us to retain the elevated build. Now, this proposed bridge is about 30 feet up higher than the tracks. We have to be about 23 feet from top of rail up to the underside of the bridge. And then the bridge structure depth is about seven feet. It's worth saying, this bridge is designed, conceptually at this point, but it's designed just like the Minnatt Truck Highway 11 bridge over the CN tracks. Minnatt had to do a lot of work with CN to position the, the piers for the bridge, maybe not so much the abutment. This is a three-span bridge, which maybe you can't tell from the drawing, but there's a center span of the bridge that clears the railroad right of way. So there's no structural element of the bridge within the railroad right of way. The columns come down outside of the railroad right of way. Then there's a short span beyond that where the abutments come down. So it's, it's patterned exactly after the Minnott Bridge. Our thinking was if, if CN approved that Minnott Bridge configuration on Highway 11, that same span configuration, because it's the same railroad right of way, should work here as well. So anyway, there are right of way impacts with this one. And that's part of what we wanted to update you on. Starting with the southwest quadrant here, the Stripes families in the southwest quadrant. We have talked with the Stripes and I think we have a, a workable agreement with them. We have not, we have not formalized an east one. But we've talked to them, we've showed them the drawings, we've talked about how we could redo their driveway. The fact that we've got some retaining walls here minimizes the impact of the road or impact on their property in the area adjacent to their house. So I think we could work something out with the Stripes. In the southeast quadrant, Stinson family, we have, we talked with the Stinsons during the original project development. We have not talked to the Stinsons recently. We think we're okay with Stinsons. We don't, we don't really need much property from the Stinsons. This is one of those properties where by shifting the proposed road north of the existing road and by having some retaining walls come off the end of the bridge deck, impacts are minimal. I will say there's some visual impacts certainly. If somebody doesn't like looking at the side of a retaining wall or the side of an embankment, those issues are certainly there. I don't mean to minimize that. But physical impacts onto their property, I think, are minimized with Stinson based on this configuration. The northeast quadrant is the Forside quadrant. We've had good conversations with Forside. Been to our meetings, talked to them. And I think we have a workable arrangement there. I think we could categorize them as willing sellers. And so we feel good about the northeast quadrant here. And the last one is the northwest quadrant. This one has seen some change of ownership over the couple of years. There was a time when the bank had it. It seems now maybe there's a contract for deed. So there's been some different ownership. This, this parcel would have some impacts. It's combined with the fact that the road is shifted to the north. Based on how long the retaining wall is here, there'd be some impacts to that parcel. There's also a remaining question about how we get access to that parcel. Would we construct a frontage road, let's say, that would run along the north edge of the Van Lynn Road to get over to the home or to the garage for this parcel? And that's partly why the proposed right of way is offset so much from the existing right of way. So we, we've got some challenges in the northwest quadrant. And we've got a little bit of work to do with those property owners. I think the other three quadrants were in good shape. This one, I think, is still a question mark. So.
I see about the southwest one, they're gonna, they're gonna lose their trees as a bumper.
There is, there is part of that impact, yeah. And one of the things that we're trying to understand is the, there's a trade-off between constructing retaining walls or grading the area out. You know, of course, retaining walls are more expensive than just grading it out. But then retaining walls help to minimize the right of way impact. So there's some, there's some back and forth there. We could find kind of the sweet spot on how long of a retaining wall do we need to minimize the impact? Without having the whole thing being retained, Phil, we probably need to find a balance there. So this is the kind of stuff we wanted to bring to you. The other drawing, again, just shows no retaining walls, more grading and more impacts. Same scenario, northwest quadrant, I think is our biggest challenge right now. Is there been cost efforts? The retaining wall option is, could be, you know, a couple hundred thousand, could be half a million dollar more, that sort of a thing. I think it's in that. It's at least that. I'd say it's at least a half a million. The, the frontage roads are a question too. Stripes, for example, have been very accommodating in how we realign their driveway. They already have two driveways under their parcel. They have one straight north of the house and they have one at their west property line. So they said, well, we'd be, we'd be okay to shift into our west driveway. And I think we've got a good relationship with Mr. Forside as well. We could work that scenario out. Just have to get to that northwest quadrant. So wondering again if, if you have any thoughts? Do you think it's time for a public meeting? How would you like to move ahead with this one?
Go ahead, Brian. I, I just give with, CN with the mother train traffic and they're building all these sightings. Can't believe that us putting a bridge over there wouldn't be a huge advantage to CN. Absolute huge advantage. It would be. And why they would not be on board to maybe help a little bit. Because they're spending millions of dollars building these sightings. They're right in the middle of it. We disrupt it with a county road. So I just, I don't know if that's an opportunity or not. But this one definitely, to me, solves the emergency issue. If there's an emergency in this area, be it fire, ambulance, law enforcement, whatever, you have access to that east end of the road. Whereas without the bridge, we could still be running this way and blocked. And then we gotta go all the way back around and come up the county road. So, I mean, to me, it's a two-pronged thing. That bridge is very important, I believe, to that extent.
Let's ask Kevin, listen. If you were coming up, just routinely going to town under an emergency and you came up to the crossing, there's a train there and the other road out to Highway 11 existed, would you ask you to turn around and go all the way up to the lake and back? Or would you sit there 10 minutes and wait for the train?
If the train was sitting there, I would, I would go up, I would go east.
If it wasn't moving?
Yeah. If it was moving, I'd, I'd just wait. Well, the rail has a lot of, I mean, they supersede everything on the transportation chains. We found that out directly. So we're gonna be dealing with that anyway.
To Brian's, but we have talked to Minnott about CN's obligation, let's say, relative to the cost of this bridge. Because I understand that their obligation is only to reimburse us for the value of the grade crossing. So if, if somebody, maybe it's Minnott, decides that grade crossing is worth $400,000, then I think that would be CN's minimum required contribution to the project. The value of the elimination of a grade crossing. So there is that part of it. Whether CN would voluntarily go for more, I'm not sure. But I think that is their minimum contribution.
Well, if we were to do one or either, it's gonna cost a lot of money. And this, I still can't believe if you can't find some outside dollars. So you need for.
Frame of reference, Minnott opened bids on Truck Highway 11 over the CN tracks. AGM got that job. It's about a $6 million job. It's $6 million? It's a little, it's a little different than ours, but it's, you know, quite similar. The, the bridge is the heart of the project.
Do we have any, any ones that'd be easiest to get public money for, a bridge or a road? Have any, have a feeling for that at all? May have to be public money for both of them.
Well, you get, you get in front of a transportation, they testify, yeah, we're only gonna get one. We wanna pay that. What is the most important and critical? What do you think we have the best chance of? Because, you know, here again, this, this isn't, this isn't like a major highway. And 52 people, I gotta tell you, they look at, it's just like, sort of like airports, Bob knows this. We talk about spending that kind of money, the first thing they ask is, for how many people? And you say, 52 people.
Well, 52 homes.
52 homes, I mean, for them, that's kind of small when they look at one of their railroads. You have to make, you have to make that special case. To me, the case is, with derailment, with all those, you know, we don't even know what they have on there. We know that.
We pursued, we talked to folks at SRF, especially, I would give some grant funds, especially Thunder Money. Trent and I were both in those conversations. We talked about Tiger Fund. I think we talked about Fast Lanes. Tiger was, it was told us more directed to transit, let's say, large users, transit, that sort of thing. The Fast Lanes is designed to increase the throughput of freight rail traffic, which to us, you know, you think, well, if we're getting rid of the grade crossing and putting a bridge there, it would potentially increase the throughput of freight rail traffic. I think SRF did not agree. SRF, as I recall, didn't think that Tiger money or Fast Lane money would be good candidates for us for this project or for the road project. Not to say there's not other projects, but we hear a lot about Tiger money and we hear Fast Lanes and we didn't think either of those were good fits.
I think would have to be a straight out, a special appropriate.
Sure.
Because of many sorts of things. Go ahead. So a lot, large users, there's no one larger in, in the country than CN. They've got the largest rail port in the country right out, right out here at Rainier. So.
Well, now, 20% of their freight rail traffic's coming into the US. You bet. It's a big one. Well, well, should we come to the board to talk about a public meeting? Is that the next step? Or are you not ready for that?
Well, I, I guess we're gonna have a public meeting on both projects. Is that what you wanna do? What are your thoughts?
Pursue the road, I think.
I think we should do them separately, because there are a few different issues and affect different.
I think we look for a longer road, aren't we not? Possibly.
I wish I would have got to the north coast property. I wish I had a better, better feel for that one. Certainly, the weather and permitting is more challenging with the road. We've been told that an environmental assessment that's at least a year long. To us, the road couldn't happen before 2020. The bridge could happen in 2019 if we were prioritizing that way. But the road still has permitting challenges getting through the core. But the sooner we can get to a preferred alignment, the sooner we can start that permit application.
I guess, you know, I would, I would kind of leave it up to you. I mean, if you wanna do them both and have one big meeting, we can certainly do that. I suppose to be a little more efficient.
Wonder if we could set it up where sort of the first hour is on the road and the second hour is on the bridge? Could be scheduled at that.
That might be a way to do it. To me, everybody's invited to come for the whole thing.
Seems like a lot of common interest in how I've been to come. We could, however you like. We could certainly bring the RBA for the, we could put them both on the RBA. We can talk about it, I guess, and see how we wanna go.
And we wouldn't have to set it up as a real planned schedule because you never know who those meetings are gonna go. Who's gonna show up and how long they're gonna be. You know, when you have those kind of meetings, you have to let people express themselves.
Right. Yeah, it could spill over for sure.
Well, yeah, I think sooner we get moving, the better because.
Right.
We're not looking for any dollars.
Yeah.
We gotta get going quick.
I don't know what, what the timing would be to make sure that everybody's back. I don't know how many snowbirds are out that way, but maybe the next one.
Sure. Item three is this little 11 by 17, got little yellow stickers all over it. It's to talk about the same intersection, the Van Lynn at the CN tracks. It's sort of a train detection infrastructure item. You can see Sheriff Hedlund is here. We've certainly talked also with Adam Anassa for fire and ambulance. We've been copying the city police on this as well. This, forgive the drawing, it's a lousy drawing, but it's intended to, to call attention to a couple of things. If we put a train detection system at the grade crossing of Highway 24 and the CN tracks, and in our, in our sort of preliminary idea, that would be comprised of two cameras. One camera that could see the grade crossing in the, in the tracks to the north of the grade crossing and one camera that can see the grade crossing in the tracks to the south. Both of those cameras send live feeds back to the fire hall for use by the fire and the ambulance and a live feed to the LEC for use by fire, sorry, sheriff and police. And that's where folks like Perrin come in. Perrin would have to find a way to accommodate us with infrastructure. Is it a, is it a dedicated monitor? Is it just a feed into their system? That sort of thing. We also have some things to work out relative to fiber, wireless, et cetera. How do we get that signal from the grade crossing to the dispatchers? The idea would be that if the dispatchers had this live information, and we think it really would be live information, video feeds from these cameras. As a call comes in, the dispatcher could look at those feeds, decide if there's trains either in the grade crossing or soon to be in the grade crossing, and send the emergency responders on the alternate route, which we believe, in talking with the emergency responders, would be into downtown Rainier. They would jump on the maintenance road that CN folks use, runs along the east side of the track. And you would use that maintenance road to get to your destination on the Van Lynn east of the tracks. We know that maintenance road is, is a rough road. I think it is maintained annually by the CN, but it's a rough road. And we've heard from ambulance folks and fire truck drivers, it's, it's a rough road. And we also, to my knowledge, do not have a formal agreement with CN to use that. That might be something we have to talk about further. But the, the question we wanted to put before the board was, are you interested in having us pursue this system? We've taken quotes from a professional design service. The same outfit that did the advance warning flasher with us on Truck Highway 11 for downtown Rainier, they have the same kind of experience in this sort of area. So it's about a $16,000 quote for professional design services. That would be to design the infrastructure and to help us do bidding documents so we could go out and hire an electrical contractor. so we could go out and hire an electrical contractor to get that done. Wondering if the board is interested in this and should we move forward? Or do you need more information to think about in this project?
I think the, Sheriff here, where is he?
Yeah, I'm hiding.
You're hiding out?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on, on this? I mean, obviously, you've got to get equipment out there. We have had conversations in the past with CN and, you know, our position has been, we have an emergency, we're using that road. I don't care if they put gates up or whatever, we're tearing them down. We're going to protect people. But that was just me speaking.
Yeah, at the end of the day, if anyone trespasses on that road, they're calling us anyway, so.
Full circle, yeah.
Yeah. No, I, Joe's been keeping us in the loop. I think it's a good idea, especially until either a road gets punched through or an overpass something in the meantime. Because, yeah, I mean, every, when you're talking about emergency response, ambulance, I mean, if we sent an ambulance down that road and the train's blocked, I mean, minutes can save lives. So, I think it's, I think it's worth pursuing.
How do the ambulance personnel feel about an ambulance being able to make it down that service road?
I haven't had any discussion with Adam recently.
Because a loaded tanker truck, I don't, I don't think would be able to, myself, I've, I've taken it, you know, when the road is blocked. But I've called CN when, when I've taken it, you know, and told them I was using their road. So, keep your road off, you know, off the crossing and, and I won't take it. But, but anyhow, I'd have a concern about, you know, whether an ambulance, like I say, I don't think a tanker truck would be able to make it.
We, we had a CN representative who worked with us for years and then he, they had him in a different position. Then he came back and became our rep again, but he retired. They had his office out in Washington. He was always very responsive and helpful on these issues and, and I don't know who our contacts are anymore.
I didn't know he retired.
Yeah. Forget what his name was.
Kevin Susie?
Yeah, Kevin.
Yeah.
But anyway, I, I, so getting back to your, your question, Joe, I mean, yeah, I, I think one of our first steps should be sitting down and I think we need you there as a sheriff.
Correct.
And what, where are they on this? What can we do? So, we've got some certainty about how we can get emergency vehicles in there. As far as the, the signal, I mean, if that's something that everyone feels is needed, I think we should at least look into it.
I mean, if, if the, if the board goes to build the road, obviously, we, we need the signal because we, it's going to give us the alternative. If you put the, we decide that the bridge is going to be the first thing, you know, so that's to be built in a year and 18 months, you know, and we throwing away $50,000 putting this in and we don't, we're not going to need it. So, but I think it's worthwhile moving forward and researching, see, okay, the proposal to see how much it would cost to, to do the engineering on it.
And you could save lives because then the emergency vehicles know that thing is closed. They've got to get in a different.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the thing, the time that it takes, as Perrin says, to grab all the way down the Van Lynn and then you see the grade crossing blocked. You have to double back. And then I think they would go down, they'd go through downtown Rainier anyway if they, as opposed to doing nothing. Certainly, if they could break the train in a hurry, they'd probably try to break the train.
And they go into downtown Rainier, I mean, well, of course, the flashing lights would be, this block, that's, I did have, if you overpass and then take the road around, and that's a ten. At that time, I think the emergency situation, the house is gone or the, or the patient is gone, one of the two. It's a bad situation.
Right. The idea would be that this could save several minutes. If, if the dispatcher said good current information, could it save some important time upfront? That's what we just wanted to talk about.
Well, the, one option we don't have is to do nothing, so.
Right.
All right. I don't know what the impact is to the school district. I know they've been delayed, kids have been out the cold for quite a while and a bus couldn't get through.
The bus was there for 30 minutes yesterday and Carissa had to take her kids to school.
30 minutes, the bus?
A hour late. Yes. 30 minutes and the train was just sitting there, so. And there was no call to any of the parents past the track.
That's a serious issue.
I, I wish she would have called me because, I mean, I wouldn't have been able to do anything, but I would have been worried. But anyhow.
30 minutes.
What happened?
I get, I get calls known to me from a few people, so.
I always come to do stuff.
Yep. Now, we're on, there's two drawings. I apologize, these are also called option A and B. I should have thought of that. These are two big fold-out drawings. One has the orange, series of orange lines on it. That's a proposed sidewalk on the west side of Second Avenue East. We're in the area of east side of International Falls.
I got another option I got.
15th Street to 26th Street. One of the other options shows a sidewalk and then that's the sidewalk crossing over at 19th Street. So, we've been, we've been working on this project for a couple of years. A and B, and B, B is orange, it's out on the west side and A crosses at 19th Street. So, I'll start over. For option A, the proposed sidewalk is on the west side of Second Avenue East from 26th Street up to 19th Street. It crosses at the 19th at the Hollard Rollerblade right there, over to the east side. So, from 19th to 15th, the proposed sidewalk's on the east side of Second Avenue East. The other one, option B in orange, shows a proposed sidewalk that stays fully on the west side, all the way from 26th up to 15th. But either way is fine. They're, they're very similar. It's just, just kind of a check-in. When we, when we last talked, we had, we had a plan for a proposed sidewalk that was fully on the east side of Second Avenue East. We also had one that crossed, I think, at about 21st Street, right around the top of the hill, maybe 22nd Street. So, we had a public meeting and we were surprised, I think, to hear some of the input from folks. We had thought that folks would like a boulevard. In fact, we thought the wider boulevard between the sidewalk and the curb, the better. We heard surprising opposition to that where folks felt better about having the sidewalk right at the back of curb, which surprised us. Like when we see what the county did on Keenan Drive. When the county redid Keenan Drive, they built about a five-foot wide sidewalk right at the back of curb. I think there were some constraints there with some light poles and there were some other challenges there. When you look at that, you wonder if, what a, you know, what a four-foot green strip have been better between the back of curb and then a sidewalk? And does that make people feel a little bit safer? The people that came to the public meeting for Second Avenue East, I, I think there was probably people in the majority that preferred having the sidewalk at the back of the curb if it would work. There's some maintenance advantages probably to having it at the back of curb. It's easier to follow the sidewalk when you follow the road. In these scenarios, when we have the sidewalk on the west side of the road, we have a three or four-foot green strip, like a sod strip between the curb and the sidewalk because there's mailboxes up and down the whole west side.
I, I can tell you the differences. When we did Keenan Drive, there's no homes, you know, for a lot of it. So, people, we're here, if we move, if we don't, if we don't do it along the curb, you're going to move into there with the, even though it's county road, right of ways or yardage. I mean, that's what, that's what I got ordered, Joe, I could be wrong, but.
Sure.
Or, or so many people on the east side complained a lot.
So, we just kind of wanted to give you.
You must be talking about that great big guy.
There, there, there are issues in play, the whip poles Minnesota Power has. Minnesota Power has their down guys, they have some infrastructure out there. All their infrastructure is whip poles. Of course, Frontier is on some of those poles. Medco could be on some of those poles.
There's a lot of wires.
There's a lot of stuff out there. The, having the sidewalk on the east side had some conflicts with the Minnesota Power infrastructure. Requires moving. There certainly, there's many ways to do this. The two drawings here, again, they show from 19th to 26th, we're on the, we're on the west side and from 19th north to 15th, we're on the east side. There's an in-place sidewalk on the east side of the road from about 21st Street to 15th Street. And it's, it's backed by the right-of-way. The road is not in the middle of the right-of-way. There's a lot more right-of-way on the east side of the road than there is on the west side of the road. For some reason, the road, I'm not sure if it's a combination of vacating property or if it was never put in the middle of the road or additional property, meant secured, I don't know. But there's more public right-of-way on the east side of the road than there is on the west side. There's, in some of these configurations where we have the proposed sidewalk on the west side of the road, we need some easements from some of the property owners to make that work. One of the big changes from what we brought to the previous public meeting, the initial drawings, again, we crossed from the west side to the east side, right around the top of the hill by the apartment buildings. That was at an uncontrolled intersection. So, we moved, for one of these scenarios, the option A scenario, we moved that crossing point to 19th Street. It's a four-way stop sign with the idea being that that would be the safest place that folks could cross from one side of the road to the other. So, that's what option A shows. And option A then shows, once you get north of 19th Street, we show construction with a proposed sidewalk right at the back of curb. And we show, it has to be about a seven or eight-foot wide sidewalk. This is something where Gary Stone and Ted Brokaw, when they were doing this with us, Gary pointed out that there's an ADA accommodation where you need a two-foot buffer adjacent to the curb. So, if you think about a seven-foot wide concrete sidewalk right at the back of curb, the first two feet are sort of buffer space and then the next five feet are the actual usable sidewalk. So, in our scenario, we would show a minimum seven-foot wide walk right at the back of curb on that east side. Again, on the west side, because there's a continuous string of mailboxes, we need a three to four-foot green strip between the back of curb and the sidewalk.
Joe, it's still, if you talk on the west side, we're still all the way up, well within the right-of-way?
It's tight. Once you start getting the front.
Up here on the south side.
And on the north end too, there's a couple of blocks where it gets tight. Yeah. The advantage of being on the west side is you never have to cross. One of the advantages about being on the west side of the south end of the job, you have a far fewer conflicts with Minnesota Power. Minnesota Power has a lot of stuff from like 23rd to 26th Streets. So, being on the west side is advantageous from a standpoint of working around Minnesota Power or vice versa.
Right. One quick question. To, to save some of that on the west side, could, can we talk to the postal service about moving the boxes to the east side? And that's, that's six blocks or eight blocks. Why they could not reverse and go north with their delivery?
I, I think that the city has, I should have, I could have invited Gary to talk to you. I think that that discussion took place with the post office and they were given a no thank you from the post office. We could try it again. I have not talked to the post office about it. But I think that the position of the post office is, gives the city trouble. It's challenging to, anyway, I should talk to the post office.
I don't, I don't have the first $10. There's savings of dollars and I make some headache from the property owner. But if you would save that two, three or four feet of right-of-way, the mailboxes right there.
We'll try the post office. What I've heard is they are unwilling to change where those mailboxes are, but we'll try it again.
That would be from 15th to 26th.
36th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wait, the post office is going and it's going to be out of business pretty soon anyway, so.
So, this one, what's, what's different about this also is when we, when we brought this project to the board and to the community before, it was just a sidewalk project. Since then, we've, we have recommended and we brought this to the board in the budget meetings that we do a resurfacing as well. So, we've got, our plans are for a reclamation and a repay as well as some repairs to the curb and gutter. One of the criticisms we took from State 8 for our work on 11th Street, I guess, and really 17th Street, we did resurfacing on 11th and 17th in town. State 8 told us when they came up to do their inspection in the fall that we really should have cleaned up the ADA accommodations and all the places where the sidewalk comes to the corners. I guess it's not a black and white requirement. Like I said, if you touch the road, you really should have cleaned up the ADA accommodations. So, this one is to, we're sort of taking that guidance to think that we really should clean up the curb and gutter. We should clean up all the pet ramps where the sidewalks come together on Second Avenue East. But the road is also in need of a resurfacing. So, we've been talking to the folks at the city to be sure if they have any utility work that needs to be done and they get that done before we would resurface the road. Yeah. So, really come to the board to think, have we given you enough information to think it's time for another public meeting to see what folks like and don't like about these plans? So, do you? I would like to.
You're going to, you're going to have that one great big guy laying on the road there. We don't have a piece of.
That's one big.
Go to the west side. I got a feeling he's going to like the, the west side one. Right. That's right. So, do you think we're ready for that? Is that okay with the board?
I think so.
All right. We'd like to do that. Good. There. When is 53 downtown, when is that scheduled?
Construction 2020.
It's in rubber, in rubber.
We're going to be doing the runway in 2022. Big construction here.
Yeah, in the building?
No, in the airport.
In the building?
Nope. The runway.
Oh, the runway.
Yeah.
We're doing the airport. There's three of them for this one. This one, we're on the Burner Road. Everybody on the Burner Road? Yep, there's three attachments in here for the Burner Road. One's an 11 by 17, kind of a Google map with little red and white notes on it. Then there's two drawings we've plucked out of the GSA EIS refresher document. Really just kind of want to talk about the Burner Road from Highway 11 south down to 13th Street. Everybody good? So, there's a couple of things going on. GSA is working with ISON Home security, customs, et cetera. They're looking at relocating the customs facility from its current location to, I think their preference is alternate 10 along the riverbank where PCA stores their trailers. There's, there's drawings in here. There's a drawing that shows, I don't know if everybody's seen, sort of this alternate 10 from the EIS review. There's an alternate 8 also that looks more at the border bobs area and the east end of the PCA parking lot. I'm not sure where the GSA is in their EIS refresher, but I think they're supposed to be studying which of those options works the best. GSA called and asked us the question, do we, do we think that the county would be willing to vacate what for us is Casas 332 or the Burner Road in the area from Trump Highway 11 south to presumably 13th Street? And I'll certainly say that the call did not come from PCA, there's no official request from PCA. It was just an inquiry from GSA as part of their studying. I think, at the time, I think they were looking at displacing the PCA trailer storage area on the riverbank. There was discussion at that time, the trailers were going to be stored on the east side of the Burner Road in the First Creek area. I think there's new information where maybe there's consideration being given to move in the trailer storage area from along the riverbank to perhaps the Slap Town area. I don't have a drawing that shows that, but really just kind of wanted to share that, that with you, that the GSA was, was wondering if that was a possibility. I certainly said I have, I have no idea. That's a decision way above my pay grade.
Well, Joe, for clarification, for, for the board here, when they're talking about closing the Burner Road, that would include closing it to loggers, for example?
The, the way it was characterized converted from a, a public road to a private road.
You essentially sealed out the entrance to Highway 11 East.
And I don't want to overstate it. It was, could have just been a casual inquiry. I just really wanted to share it. And I want to share it in the context of the fact that there's a couple of other things going on. MDNW Railroad is working with Mid- Dot to reconstruct the grade crossing of MDNW and 332. Public Trump Highway dollars, we're going to that. I've talked with Darwin about it. So, Darwin certainly is aware that there's considerations to the Burner Road. But again, I don't want to overstate, there's no official request. Just really wanted to share the board that GSA was asking the question. I also wanted to say we checked with State 8. If we did vacate the Burner Road, are there State 8 implications? And because that part of 332 is a turnback segment, we lose that mileage if we vacate it. It's typical Casas. We vacate it, we can move the mileage somewhere else. In this case, if, if we were to vacate it because it was a turnback, we lose it. So, again, I'm not trying to overstate it. It's really just kind of an FYI. There was a question from GSA, what do you think would happen if we wanted to make the Burner Road a private road? Nothing from PCA. Just wanted to share.
Okay, I can only tell you that, you know, we went and sat down with the city for two years looking at that, you know, those routes and we, we finally agreed on 155. Having said that, what came out of those meetings were homeowners that live out there and they don't know who runs that particular area. Brian does? And they were strongly against it. And then, you know, speaking on behalf of the people who, you know, go east and out into my district there, if we close the Burner Road, that means all the logging community is going to cap that main highway, which creates another, you know, especially during the season when they're all trucking there. You've seen them lined up at the, at the weigh scale there. So, that would be a concern to people up there. But anyway, just, that's just from, that's what came out of those meetings.
Well, Brian? I just, I believe that any request to vacate Burner Road, we essentially seal up the north entrance to Highway 11. I, I believe it would be, logging trucks would still have entrance from the south. That's the way that was planned before. But. But I really believe the people in the southeast area of International Falls would be very opposed to vacating that. But that still would be a decision that would have to be made. I guess if concur by this kind of board, I don't think there'd be a lot of public support at this time, unless there's really some reason for it.
Fair enough. And I don't wanna overstate it. I just wanna give you the FYI.
It would turn it into a poise if the dying was concerned, the weather would be all that crap. Because the people have been very good, went during the truck season there. Because I go out that way all the time. I don't usually use the Burner Road, but people have been very good about not using it. They'll go around where the truckers are utilizing it.
Mayor, have you heard any at all on GSA, what they're looking at? I know, originally back a number of years ago, 10 was, they were sold on 10, but then they ran out of money, I think. But I thought the downtown area, north of the Elks and border of Rogers area was what they were really looking at. No?
Well, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Redd, just to maybe echo what Joe has said, I had informal discussions with Aggie Corporation of America and they are, I have a strong interest, probably desire to have the Burner Road closed. So that is, I think it's more than just GSA making an inquiry, an informal discussion. They haven't been anything formal. With regard to the GSA, had a conversation with them a week ago and they continue to pursue alternative 10. And certainly because it's got more space, allows a greater number of facilities there because the Customs and Border Protection would like to have more going on in that area than what would be allowed in alternative eight. I personally have sent a letter to the GSA along with the counselor, Ryan Riggs, expressing concerns about alternative 10 with the bike path there. And they wanna have all trucks both enter and exit across that bike path. That is concerning. The area that is marked former Slap Town and, Joey, you're correct, that's probably where trailers would have to go if alternative 10 becomes a reality. That would take away city, I don't know if the county's dumping any snow there, but certainly it's a key snow dump area for the city. We would lose that. I'm not sure where we would go at this point to haul snow. Very, very convenient to take and remove the snow from downtown and 53 and be able to take it there. We clean it up every year after the snow melts. So a couple of big concerns there for the city.
Ultimately, that has the challenge too of a whole lot of traffic crossing, the MDNW crossing heading into the mill. It becomes a focal point. Everybody going in and out of Customs goes across that MDNW crossing there, heading to the mill.
Number of years ago, we did a lot of work on this and number 10 was, option 10 was, alternative 10 was really well planned. All the traffic's gonna go in and out of, right there just east of International Falls. All the backups, anything that is gonna be excess of what the new road accesses the bridge, anything that's gonna go further east to Rainier. But that's gonna be a total sterile corridor. It's gonna be totally fenced all the way from that crossing all the way to the bridge. And everybody's gonna enter Canada and come out of Canada back to this point. So I mean, it's gonna be very disruptive, but, you know, I guess the government didn't wanna build it, took and built it.
Alternative 10 also requires them to build a, I'm not sure what you call it, but it would be out into the river. It would require a lane of traffic to be built into the river. So you would have some type of a partial bridge or construction area that would be located into the river.
Actually, then through water?
And I don't know in alternative eight, if you look at that drawing that Joe has presented, there's a fair amount of green space between the present site and where that parking area would be. And it doesn't seem like they're utilizing that green space. I don't know how much land that is. And I think with the shutdown in 2013 of the two paper machines and the off-machine coater, there may be more of the parking lot today that's available than what was then also.
What, if I could, Mayor, what did the city council propose? What was their proposal?
Well, the city, we're talking 2011, and they supported the alternative 10 as an option that was put forth at that time. Now, it's been seven years and a great deal has changed in the community. And I think that, I think the overall environmental impact statement and probably cultural review needs to be done before further pursuit is done on these by the GSA. They're gonna have, it's gonna have an impact on the community.
You never know what you get into, you know, speaking of Slap Town, when the county ended up with the Gateway Trading Post, former Gateway Trading Post, we were told there was one tank there. Of course, county was responsible for cleaning it up. And when Grindel sent the crew out there, started digging, there were tanks everywhere. And we had to go through this huge, complex, you know...
Remediation.
Exactly. Because they had all leaked, of course, and things like that. It turned out to be very expensive. So I'm just saying, you never know what you run into in these kind of deals. In Slap Town and stuff, who knows what was all done in that area too.
But again, vacating Burner Road has an impact on public service. Imagine there's a police supplier and sheriff and everybody else losing that road. So alternate routes would have to be designated for that.
I sure remember that. There was very strong opposition and, you know, at that time, I don't know if PCA was here yet then, but at that time, the company agreed, let's do it for a year and after a year. They said they'd had no problem. So it's been there ever since.
Very good. Next one on page two, we're into Fort Hill Cemetery. This one, there's just a couple of handouts here. One just kinda gives an overview of the cemetery on Memorial Drive relative to the American Legion site, VFW site, St. Thomas Fort Hill. And just to start out with, my brother-in-law, Joe Brecky, he's on the St. Thomas Cemetery Board. He did not ask me to bring him here to support. He doesn't even know I'm here talking to you about it today. This is something Brad and I have talked about. And Brad, try to mean any time you want. We've just observed that it feels, I'm not speaking for Brad now. It feels to me like the cemetery is probably underfunded in terms of magnates. And wondering, is there anything that we could do to help with that? It could be sentenced to serve. It could be held in forces. We know there's issues relative to competing with private contractors. We don't wanna do that. But we're not saying the cemetery board is not doing a good job of taking care of the property. It was just a discussion amongst board members. Again, and I know there's lots of cemeteries across the county, 20 to 30 cemeteries, as I understand it. So we don't wanna say we're only concerned about this one. But just a question, cemeteries anywhere across the county, if they needed help, are we in any kind of position to do anything? I have not talked to anybody on the cemetery board. I haven't asked if they want help or if they need help.
Well, having been here longer, we've had these discussions in the past and that is the issue. Whatever we do for one cemetery, we're doing for all of them. There are a number of them out there that... So what we've really done historically, I mean, we have, you know, whenever something needed, like some gravel, things like that, county contributed. To that end, we've done that. We've got them down on 65, very old ones. So it's been a case-by-case type situation. But we have not entered into the realm of overtaking them because it's just too much.
Not suggesting that. I just wonder, is there anything we could, could we ask them if they need help in any areas? And I'm not speaking for sentenced to serve, but is that sort of an arm of our department where the sentenced to serve help with that?
Sentenced to serve would be great, but now we're down to one. We used to have two crews. Now we're down to one. We've got them out at the transfer station and they stay pretty busy out there as far as I know. But certainly if they're available, I think that'd be good use of their services. And here again, countywide, I mean, you know, some of these little cemetery associations out there, the churches generally were taking care of them. Those populations have gotten so small, very difficult for them too. I can only speak for myself. I mean, I think as part of the county, we're willing to help, but I don't know if we can get it on like regularly scheduled.
I understand.
I think it's a good idea.
But I believe ultimately the county is responsible for cemeteries, are we not?
Yeah, we went through all that back then too. I don't remember all the details. I think we have a role. That's why I look at it.
I guess the thing would be for some of the outlined cemeteries, if they come before the board and ask for a little bit of help and like Wade said, with gravel or whatever. But same thing with, of course, Joe, if there's something, ask us. There may be something we can help with, you know? Maybe put some gravel on their roads, maybe do some grading for them. I know the roadways around there, they're bad, bad shape. Big holes, water holes. People have gotta walk, if there's a funeral, they can't walk down the road. They gotta walk out in the grass.
Eric'sburg comes to mind. I think Carol's got a plot for me out there.
I think we're always open for requests.
It looks nice out there.
They do a good job of taking care of Carol there. Who was it that wanted to be buried next to him, Carol or? Richard De Mars?
First name on top.
I know, three. Joe, I gotta tell you this quick story. Richard De Mars, who, you know, we have our conflicts and stuff. I just loved him myself, but he's a character. But he called up Carol one day and he said, Carol, I understand you and Wade have a plot out here at Eric'sburg. Do you? And she said, well, yeah, we do. He said, good. He said, so do I. That's where I'm gonna be buried. And I wanna be buried right next to you guys so that when Wade gets here, I can roll over and kick him. I just love him. What a character. Anyway, that's my cemetery story. But anyway, Joe, to that end, I don't think we need a formal policy on that. I think, you know, you're just, you're out there a lot, so you know what's wrong out there at those places and talking to people. If they need something, we can just help.
Maybe we can do some outreach and see what some of those boards say and are there things that they need? We'll certainly come back if we get any kind of feedback that way.
If it's a wet summer and they get behind on mowing, and it's a big area, and people go out there to visit their relatives, the place looks pretty bad and they get all kinds of criticism, like the place is so big, I think there are times they really need help.
I know. It's tempting because we feel like they could use some help. We're not sure how we could best help, but it feels like they need some help sometimes.
What I see, the associations, the cemetery associations are getting smaller and their people are getting smaller and just can't do it the way they used to.
Next two items are pretty similar. One is Cassau 90 Brown's Corner. Another one's 97 and 145 at Rogers Corner. Just kinda doubling back from some preliminary design we did, some public meetings that we had. We told the folks we're gonna get back to them this spring, starting with County 90. We set aside three miles of county State Aid highway mileage for Cassau 90 at Brown's Corner. We did some preliminary designs. We brought it to the folks. I think we started with letters, then we had a public meeting, put a bunch of drawings on the wall and asked folks, what do you think? Do you think this is a good place to upgrade to a State Aid road? We explained that if you upgrade to a State Aid road, there are certain standards that have to be met. That gets into some grading and some right of way. Sorry, there is no handouts for either one of these items. Sorry about that. Just a couple of talkers. So I would say for County 90, it was mostly opposition. Folks generally felt the road's okay. We don't wanna upgrade to county standards. We don't want the grading and the right of way impacts to go with it. We don't wanna lose some trees that would be required. I think our takeaway from 90 was it was a no thank you. And if it is, that's fine. We would say then that we would like to send letters to kinda close the loop. And then we could know that those three miles of Cassau mileage that are now on 90 could be moved to whatever the next appropriate project is. We don't have the Vanlon extension, for example. If that goes forward, we need mileage for that. That is not earmarked as 24 yet. 103, which we've talked about and it's in the list here, that is still a county road 103. It's not Cassau 103. That needs at least two miles, so that would be another place to go. So really just kinda wondering if the board would agree that the Brown's Corner, Cassau 90, that project is maybe a no thank you. We'll send letters and then we'll know that we can have access to that mileage in the future.
Sort of.
Go ahead. Okay?
If it doesn't go on 90, you know, I don't really wanna be losing Cassau miles in my district.
I see.
I guess the Vanlon we can look at, but I'm the one and we have to be really careful with that.
Well, I guess the options are, we looked at that road thinking initially, it sure looks like it could use research. And the road is very narrow. We thought it would be nice to have some shoulders on one or both sides of that road. It's got some steep in slopes out there. So we kinda started out thinking, which road that we think needs improvements could also need State Aid criteria. And because it was a loop road, it was one of those roads that met the criteria. You know, it's got a good beginning. It's got a good ending. And so then when we applied those State Aid standards to it, there's some unfortunate side effects that come with it, with the wider road, the flatter slopes, the more right of way, the tree impacts and so on. So if we want to upgrade that road with Cassau dollars, we have to kinda play by the State Aid rules. The other ways to upgrade the road would be with local dollars and those are challenging as well. So just kinda wondering, does the board have thoughts on what we should do with 90? Should we tell those folks, you spoke to us, you said you don't want it upgraded to a Cassau, so let's just sort of put a bow on that and say we're not gonna upgrade it to a Cassau based on what we know right now?
I couldn't be there that night and I wish I could have because I told Joe. What they, I don't think understands is that there is no alternative here. I mean, if it goes back to county road, like all their county roads, it would go probably towards the bottom of the list because they turned down the opportunity to have it rebuilt with state dollars. County dollars are very hard to come by and, you know. And I can only, you know, I wasn't at the meeting, but of course I did hear from, the only objections I really heard were from three people and two of them were on the curb. You know what I'm talking about? You know, where the bridge was and then they were gonna lose, they were gonna lose property.
I know what you mean. Yeah, 97 and 145, yes.
They had the biggest concern. One resident who's a business fan here in Towne objected to it, but I've never got the opportunity to talk to him yet either because I always like people to fully understand their consequences here if we don't do this in the sense that it becomes a county road and it's, we just can't, we don't have enough money to keep it regular.
Yeah. But I think from the sounds of the people speaking out there, that most people do not want to have it built up to Cassau stones.
So is County Road 90, is not a Cassau now?
It is a Cassau.
It is Cassau.
Oh, it is a Cassau now.
It is labeled as a Cassau. That's right.
So to your point, then if they moved it, you would be losing some miles because it is Cassau now.
It is a Cassau now.
But it's not built to Cassau.
No, no, it is not. No physical improvements. We had mileage that we had to allocate and so that's where we put it. We had to find roads that were at the standard for a State Aid loop road.
So how long has it been designated?
Year and a half.
Well, that's a lot to look at, Joe, but I guess...
Sure. I think we gotta look at that. If that was the best place to put it, and then there may be better spots, move the mileage. I understand your concern.
Similar but slightly different conversation now at Rogers Corner. South of Rogers Corner, you go on 97 for a mile and then you could turn and go east on 145. And that's where the bridge was over the Rat Ruck. The bridge was built in the 60s. That was a... That was a road again where we thought that road could use some resurfacing. It's a narrow road, it's got some steep shoulders, et cetera. It could form a loop. In fact, I think ninety-seven is old fifty-three actually in that area. So we took it to the people and asked, what do you think? And we had some vocal opposition from, if not a majority of people, a minority of maybe of property owners. But then there's that balancing act about how much input do we take from folks on ninety-seven versus just folks on one forty-five in the affected area? In other words, ninety-seven goes a mile south from Rogers Corner down to one forty-five, but it continues west another mile and a half, let's say. We sent letters soliciting input from everybody on ninety-seven and the UTEs that come up on ninety-seven and everybody on one forty-five, sort of the whole area we solicited input from. And was it fifty-fifty?
Very near.
There's about fifty-fifty support against. When we had the public meeting, the very outspoken people were against it and clearly against it. Yep.
I can't remember, did we tell them that that bridge needed to be replaced or?
The bridge is not really the driving force here, I think. There'll be a day when the bridge does, but it's not, it's not yet.
Okay. But if we did replace the bridge, we would need more property that was an issue too.
It was part of the realignment too of getting forty-one out there on that road then. There's a lot of hard ground.
That's the one I was thinking.
Yes. Yep, that's right.
Okay.
That's right. So that's a tough one.
Yeah.
It was not so clear in terms of the numbers, but the folks, I would say a very vocal minority of property owners were against this. But we kind of told folks then, we want to double back with you, I think it might even said March, but March or April, so they know, are we moving forward or are we not moving forward? If it meant we should have another public meeting to hear them out, if it meant we send another set of letters out saying, we're thinking about shelving this project, do you have any opposition to us shelving it? You know, we can do any of those things, whatever you like.
Go ahead, Brad. I just go quickly back to County Road ninety. I mean, I think we heard loud and clear from a vast majority of people that they were against that.
Yeah.
And I just think we send them the letter and, I mean, we have to bring it to the board or whatever, but send them the letter and just, you know, and they may lose their Cassau designation. Who knows? The roads are, if you're going to get some patch repair, that's about all you're going to get out. You're not going to get resurfaced.
I agree with Brad. We want them to understand that there's consequences.
That doesn't necessarily mean to Commissioner Scoy that, you know, his district can lose that mileage, but at least tell those people they're going to lose Cassau designation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think that they did understand it, but it might not hurt to send them a letter just saying this.
Yep.
But it was obvious, you know, that they didn't want to lose on it right of way, they didn't want to lose their trees.
You know, sometimes it comes back to bite you. A number of years ago, we gave up Memorial Drive. We took that mileage and put it onto Keenan Drive.
That's the only way we could do it.
From Second Avenue East to cemetery, you know, in the future, it's going to need some work and it's going to be county dollars. So there's, you lose some, give some when you move these mileage.
We've done a lot of horse grading over the years. I lost seventy-seven at Silverdale, but I mean, it was never going to happen. But anyway, when, if it's in Wayne's district, when that becomes available, we're going to have it.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a fistfight or two here, see who gets that. We'll draw cards or something.
We'll just make sure it's not through that thing.
Yeah.
The other one, the ninety-seven and one forty-five, I defer to Commissioner that owns that district.
Well played. Well, maybe we're not ready to move forward on that one yet?
Well, I, you know, in my view, I think it'd probably be worth it to have one more meeting and, you know, I'd make sure that I could be there for that one and make sure they understand also that, you know, it wouldn't be a top priority as a county road. Then if they're still split, it's like, we had, it took four years and three meetings and, you know, sending out cards to get a response. I'm all sharks.
Sure.
I mean, the first time we had that meeting, you know, years ago, everyone wanted to pay it, but when we had the meeting, it's fifty-fifty. And a lot of people had moved in who liked to, you know, like to be in the country and that's what they like. They love the gravel road and their idea was it keeps it safe because people travel slower, you get the sharp corners, but the line of sight and all that stuff, it was terrible. And so we had the next meeting, leaned a little bit, but not much to doing it. And the third time, the third meeting, we went out and explained, this is the last meeting and we're going to pull the designation. And Doug sent out the questionnaires and I came back and we got a, not a resounding response, but it was firm, was like sixty, forty. So we went ahead and moved with the project. I've never seen the board, if people, if a majority doesn't want it, never in the years I've been here and you guys have been here a long time now too, we've never forced the issue or something. But again, the designation, you know, we can, if we can utilize it somewhere else, then that's what we're going to do.
So we'll plan on a follow-up meeting with the folks on ninety-seven and one forty-five for, we'll send letters to the folks on ninety.
Sounds great.
Next one is one oh-three, just a quick update for you. This one, good news on one oh-three, I would say. We took the information that we worked out with Len, we brought it to the board, we got a guidance document on how to procure right-of-way easements. Eric and Trent have done a ton of work on this, gone through. This is a summary list of all the property owners that are affected on one oh-three, whether they're on the inside of the loop or the outside of the loop.
There's one on there.
There's one right at the top of the list.
Carol's married to him.
Yep. I'm on this road, but we'd like to hold the people for public meeting. Carol and I live on the very end, so I hardly utilize it. And we left it up, we left it up to Val.
It's really, we've made great progress on this one. We, Eric drafted the letters that identify, dear property owner, we, here's what we're doing with the road, we need this much permanent easement from you and why. He developed exhibits to show what those impacts are. We sat down and we reviewed those with Len. We verified that we were implementing the document we got with talking to the board, formalized them in letters and exhibits and sent them out to the property owners on one oh-three. So we certainly know that we have a lot of work to do, but at least to verify how much right-of-way we need and how much it, we think will cost and to get those out to people was a big step. So we think that, I think Eric plans to follow up a couple of weeks, start calling people, try to set up meetings face-to-face as necessary, try to see if we can get people signed up. We have worked with Bob Murray also. This road is a little bit complicated by the fact that there is some platted right-of-way out there. There's also, we would say, prescriptive right-of-way along the whole corridor. So we had to kind of merge what we get from a platted right-of-way with a prescriptive right-of-way. And we tried to, we tried to talk about that a little bit in the letters to folks, saying that there is some complications with plaques and prescriptive. We are claiming prescriptive and this amount, but that isn't enough because the road gets widened and the slopes are flattened, we need easements outside of that. We think the colored drawings would help people understand what we need and why. So it's just sort of a first step to then some face-to-face meetings and try to secure those easements.
We could look at the third from the bottom there. We have one homeowner who's impacted greatly, but he's been only to work with.
Yes, work with Joel, so that's a tough spot. The road is really a sharp, little reverse curve now at that end of the road. Right down where the county has that little township road that takes you right down to the lake there. Yep. So that's a tough spot for sure. But it's a big hurdle to get all this out the door and to have our first sort of formal offer to everybody. So that was just a quick update. Let me know, a lot of work was done there.
I think it helped the board agree on these projects and kind of change our policy.
Len was really helpful too. We got a lot of good stuff from Len. I think it got us off the dime and we were able to move forward. The next one, there's one eight-and-a-half by eleven sheet in here, it's about motor graders. This one is a topic we've started on, but we just want to see if we could double back and see if we're in agreement on that one. The reason we want to talk about motor graders today is related in part to the fact that we recently took delivery of two new Mack plow trucks. We ordered them last October, we took delivery on them a couple of weeks ago. So tandem axle plow trucks with underbody and all the goodies on them. When we talked to the board about ordering those last fall, we talked about sending those trucks, one to Little Fork, one to Misspa. And at that time, we thought, we also talked with the board about a motor grader consolidation plan that we had. Right now, we have seven motor graders, seven shops. Our plan was to go down from seven motor graders down to four. And the idea being that we would remove the motor grader from Misspa, we remove the motor grader from Little Fork and from Birchdale. The Misspa shop would share the motor grader route and usage with Big Falls. In short, we think that the Big Falls shop would use that motor grader to blade in Big Falls and in the Misspa area. Similarly for Little Fork, absent a motor grader, we would have the Falls shop blade in the Falls and cover the Little Fork area. And then lastly, Loman, would blade Loman and Birchdale. One of the, one of the real driving reasons behind this is the motor graders are, in some cases, older, but also becoming very expensive to maintain. A typical motor grader repair can be thirty to forty thousand dollars for drive train and we've had to do two of those in the last couple of years. And the rub with those is if you have a, you could have a fifty thousand dollar valued motor grader, that you then have to put thirty thousand in to repair the engine or transmission and you still have a motor grader valued at fifty thousand dollars. So it's part of this, maybe it's a misperception that these older motor graders, they're certainly well-paid for and long ago paid for, but they're not free to operate. They're very actually costly to operate. So our thoughts were, we can provide, we believe, an improved level of service on how we blade the roads across the county with a smaller motor grader fleet that is less expensive to operate and maintain. And that is our recommendation.
Yeah.
Any objections to that? And it's detailed in here. What this handout really shows is which shops we would like to see keep the motor graders, which ones we'd like to see get their motor grading done by the adjacent shop and why. And then we think if we can finalize that, we can move forward with how we would allocate the new plow trucks that we got and also move forward with sort of the maintenance replacement plan that we like to do.
Commissioner Brad?
I've always been in favor of our department has to be able to manage their departments and make those type decisions. But again, we put that, we load that back here because a couple of years, we don't want to come and request a motor grader. But no, seriously, I'm a firm believer you manage your department.
And I would invite Brad, if Brad has anything to say on this.
Well, these type of things need to come with the board, especially for the two rural commissioners because you've got a lot of road out there. Make sure there are concerns, but I'm fully comfortable.
You know, I will say, just to lay it on the table, when we had our public meeting in Birchdale last year, which was driven, I think mainly due to concerns about Minnesota power and how we were going to upgrade and maintain those roads with the additional Minnesota power traffic, that, that meeting did sort of spiral into other issues relative to how we run the Birchdale shop, how are we going to run the Birchdale shop if it doesn't have a motor grader? Is this the first step towards eliminating the Birchdale shop? It took a lot of those little turns, which was not the intent. The intent was to talk about Minnesota power, but we also did talk about the fact that we have no intentions to eliminate the Birchdale shop. I would say that our ability to continue to fund the Birchdale shop is improved by, by eliminating some of these kind of maintenance costs that we can eliminate. If, we have a couple of motor graders that if they fail tomorrow and if our plan is we're going to keep seven motor graders, one for each shop, and we have to put thirty thousand dollars into that motor grader, it takes such a big bite out of the maintenance allocation that we have. So we think that it is not a good use of our limited maintenance money.
How many miles of gravel do we have?
Which, like if we go to three, each one will have about seventy-five, eighty miles of debris. These are.
About seventy-five miles per grader. If we went down, would be moving down to three or down to four?
Down to four. We'd eliminate three of the seven and keep four.
Silverdale's only seventeen miles, but it's so far out on that.
Brad, do we use the graders at all for snow removal?
Ice removal.
Okay.
More than, I mean, we use one in the Falls because we were down the truck, we were short of trucks, so we laid it all winter, but it's way more expensive to run than the truck.
So seventy-five miles, I don't think that's, overuse for a grader, is it? Twenty miles for it?
Commissioner McBride made a very good point here to that end before you leave this, getting back to the cemeteries. You know, Brad, you're the one out there and, you know, help them, whatever. You don't have to come to the board for that. At the end of the year, you can give us a wrap up on what should be added. But that's, that's your discretion because again, Brian made a very good point, you're the ones out there. You make those decisions.
Joe, back to the trucks. Did we use the lease-to-buy option, is that how we got them?
Yes, those trucks, I think forty, forty-five thousand dollars, the trucks are like two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, I think. So we did, did we do four or five years? We did, yes, leased it all on them. The outright, it would have been four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. I think it was a ninety-two thousand dollar payment out of our budget this year. Each was like forty-six thousand. It was like two and a half percent interest, I think, on leased it all.
Where the prices have gone up though, I, oh my gosh.
But for example, our grader in Silverdale, it had thirty thousand put in two years ago in the motor. We had it in the shop because it dropped a, bent a pushrod again and patched it up. But I mean, right there, I mean, if you got to dig into that engine again, you've got the thirty, forty thousand on it. And like I said, it was patched up, I mean.
Cost of doing business.
Yeah.
But on a whole, I heard more, more opposition to getting rid of graders. But I have had people say, yeah, I think it's a good idea to, you know, get newer better. You know, so there is some, but it's probably two to one in opposition.
But we, basically we've done, everything in Little Fork last year was done by the Falls plane. We had more compliments than we had.
I've never heard.
If you don't tell them you're not digging, if you don't tell them you're digging away, they don't even know. You give them better service and then they compliment you if they know.
One thing, just to touch on, sorry, the underbody notion, the, all of our tandems, other than the last two, none of our tandems have the underbody plow, which is kind of the MinDOT model. And in some cases, the shops would like to have the blades because the motor graders can put down pressure on the blade and they can scrape. Part of our theory was if we got replacement tandems that had the underbody plows, that you can do the down pressure by having that truck at that shop, does that relieve some of the necessity of having the motor grader? So Misspa is an example. If Misspa has a new truck, let's say, that has underbody on it, does it help move the grader out of there because you don't need the grader down there to scrape ice because your new plow truck has underbody plow?
Didn't we buy a truck with an underbody for three thirty-two?
A single axle.
Single axle, okay.
Yeah.
Is that working okay?
Yeah.
I was going to ask about that. So we canceled them and contracted and renewed it and we used a truck that didn't actually work out okay or are we going to revisit that?
Well, that's, that's an interesting question. The single axle has underbody and it has brine tanks on it and it's, has lots of advantages. It's maneuverable and so on and Brad can attest to these things. The one thing that the single axle underbody, the way that the tandems are rigged, the underbody is in the middle of the truck and there's a side wing that legs behind the underbody. Because the wheelbase was shorter on the single axle, the arrangement is reversed. So there's, that state doesn't work, but there's an advantage to a tandem with an underbody as opposed to a single axle with an underbody. But it all kind of, kind of goes back to this whole thing about, is part of our methodology by removing graders and replacing tandems that have underbodies, does that, is that a good fit? by removing graders and replacing tandems that have underbodies, does that, is that a good fit? Does that kind of make sense, you know? And again, the cost is the killer. I think the, if one of these, we have, $230,000 is kind of the annual allocation for heavy equipment replacement. We've got a motor grader that we've purchased on lease-to-own. We still have a couple of payments of that. We have a couple of trucks that we've purchased on that. So we're eating sort of well into that 230 already. If a motor grader or anything fails, then it's an unexpected $30,000 or $35,000 payment. Just takes a big chunk out of that allocation.
You told me when you hired Brad, he could fix anything. That's what he told me.
Well, another thing on, excuse me, on the graders, are ones that don't have a lot of hours that are there, aren't as much as you're gonna keep them or are they gonna be sold off? Pardon? And so the one in Birchdale, even though it's got a few hours, is, you know, it's gonna be sold off?
Yeah, well, because there's no guarantees. It isn't.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Because I mean, they can pull up graders all over with that kind of hours that they just put transmissions in or whatever. I mean, there's no guarantees on, well, there's no guarantees on a new one either.
Right, yeah. But then what about the issue of, are you gonna, are they gonna have more packers behind them or different?
Well, we intend to put packers on them, start packing the road, which will increase the life between gratings.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we think that the used motor graders that we have, that we could, we could move out of the fleet, they're worth maybe about $50,000 apiece, roughly? Forty? Forty to fifty?
I mean, like, we were offered 70 for the 103.
We have a couple of 1989, we have three 1989 blades and one 1998 blade. Somehow out of those four, we'd like to take the three that are the least desirable and move those out. But just in round numbers, you left there worth $40,000 apiece, you know, $120,000 that we could use for other things. Wayne's got a great question, the packers. There's a piece of equipment you can, you can run behind your motor grader, especially in places where we use, let's say, crushed rock that can be upsetting to people. The packer can help kind of push that rock down into the base, less rock moving around and so on. We don't have any packers now. Brad's been looking at packers, either renting or buying, or trying to be able to bring in some of those packers to run behind the motor graders to kind of help get that anger down in the base a little bit. So it's possible that the proceeds from one of the motor graders could be used for, I don't know, what's a packer go for?
Depends if you're gonna use, find a used one and adapt it to your equipment.
Can you get a used one for 25?
Cat's gotta use it for like $6,000 right now. It's just you gotta make that after.
Right. Our oldest motor graders, our cat, everything else is down here. So there'd be a little rental fitting on some of that cat equipment, but.
You know, we've got seven graders and those are seven very pieces, expensive piece of equipment. And if we could buy a four, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, a piece of equipment that's no good, it's costing money sitting in the shop.
We don't want you to think we'll do four sevens of the blading work on the gravel roads. We think we'll take care of all the gravel roads as well or better than we have been with seven motor graders. We just think we have a way to do it more efficiently and at a lesser cost to the.
With better equipment.
Makes sense to me.